Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, October 15th, 2025. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website and for guest speakers, please do not turn off your microphones. Our first order of business is rule call. Would the Clerk please take the role?
Mr. Charlin.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Ms. Kell Smith.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger, Chair.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Amy Zace.
Good morning. Thank you all for your time today. My name's Amy Zace and I live in the Beachview neighborhood. The zoning amendments before you implementing the housing needs assessment is frankly historic. We have before us a unique opportunity to shape the future of Pittsburgh for the better, and I thank the mayor, the council, and everyone involved for their work. I know I haven't been a stranger here, so I'll try to keep my comments succinct. There are a lot of good things in the amendments brought forward by Councilwoman Strasburger, and I want to thank her specifically for working tirelessly to find a compromise. I truly believe that those of us here today agree on 90% of this package, and the things we disagree on, I hope we can move forward from. The zoning reform package will do a lot of good for Pittsburgh, and I'd like to highlight some of the specific reasons why I support the amendments brought forward. I am in favor particularly of the ability for renters to grow their income and not be immediately displaced. This is something that should not be overlooked in the original plan. Renters could be immediately displaced after graduating outside of the AMI requirements. Having renters be able to qualify for affordable units and stay in them while they increase their income is a huge benefit of this amendment that should not be overlooked. I'd also like to point out the requirement for reporting as well as a review after two years of the effectiveness of the program. I think this should be a requirement for any major undertaking of the city. When it comes to the livelihood of its residents, the city should always try to make a data-based approach to find the most effective programs. One of the recommendations of the city's Controller's Audit of existing IZ programs was that more data be collected and available to the public. What I think and hope we can all agree on is that our collaborative goal is to create abundant, affordable housing that meets the need of everyone in our city. I look forward to the council hopefully passing this package with the amendments proposed by Councilwoman Strasburger and the mayor eventually signing it. In doing so, Mayor Ganey can solidify his success in championing affordable housing and zoning reform. And as we all move forward, I look forward to working on other housing issues with advocates that need policy reforms, especially like transit-oriented development. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Next speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Don't see Dr. Miller. Our next speaker is Tanisha Long.
Tanisha Long, Crafton Heights. So a lot of times, you know, when I come up here, I haven't prepared anything in advance. I believe you don't have to get ready if you stay ready, and that's benefited me because a lot of things that we're being faced with and a lot of things we're being expected to know about, we're receiving at the very last minute. We're receiving 5:00 PM amendments that nobody's had time to read. We're receiving amendments before people have even had a chance to review them. I think that's very interesting, seeing as a lot of this discussion has been about how we haven't had enough data, how we haven't had enough time to study the problem, how we don't know enough about IZ, but apparently we know enough to send in amendments that have not been studied, researched, or that the public hasn't had time to read. I think that's disrespectful to your constituents. I think it shows a lack of care and concern, and I think it's shady, grimy, and disrespectful. I think that a lot of people who show up here have spent a lot of time on this issue because it affects them personally. The people who show up here are not people who are using this as some sort of political football. They're not people who are using this to get ahead. They're not, you know, white men making $90,000 a year talking about the fact that the dream neighborhood is not the neighborhood that they currently represent and that they would like houses elsewhere. They're people who are invested in these communities because they live there. And when we talk about inclusionary zoning, we talk about something that creates a situation where you don't get to opt in and out of racist housing policies. You're bound by IZ so that everybody can have a chance of living not only in their own neighborhood, even though some people would rather not do that. They have an opportunity to buy home there. They have an opportunity to rent there. They have an opportunity to be in the place that they would like to see, and they have an opportunity to invest in it and know that that neighborhood wants them there. When we allow developers to participate in voluntary IZ, we're making a, we're putting the ball in their court. We're saying that, you know, we understand that you may not want these people here and you may not want to make things affordable, and that's okay. We think that sort of gentrification, that racism is okay in the city of Pittsburgh, and it's not. It's not okay for me. It's not okay for my family members. It's not okay for the people who live near me and the community members that I want to keep in my community. I'm not somebody who wants to cater to developers. I never will be. I think it's disrespectful and dishonorable for those who do. You know, we're seeing emails being sent out by Walnut Capital fundraising for Corey O'Connor and those he wants to support in his administration. Developers have their hand in the city and they have their claws in the city, and I think the people who are very much at risk of being disenfranchised are the actual renters, the people who can't afford to live in Pittsburgh already, who are being priced out, who are watching our city council members cater to developers and disrespect them through midnight amendments. I think that the same respect that we showed you by showing up to these meetings and giving it our time and our consideration and studying it and researching it should have been given to us before these amendments were even introduced. And to vote on them would be absolutely a tragedy, and it would be disrespectful to every single constituent in this room. Thank you.
Next speaker is Carlino Giampolo.
Carlino Giampolo, Panther Hollow. I began yesterday's testimony by saying that certain issues before City Council focus and bring to light the very depth of a council member's strength of character and dignity. The illegal skate park in Panther Hollow is one of those issues. Later, I asked the council members, except for Barbara Warwick and Anthony Coghill, who have already made their decisions clear, to imagine if the skateboarders' piercing noises were penetrating into the homes and neighborhoods of their parents and their parents had asked them to shut down the skate park. Would they continue to ignore their parents and take no action? I then asked, if you would accept that kind of experience for your own parents, then simply send me an email stating, "I support the skate park in Panther Hollow." However, if you would not accept that kind of experience for your parents, then simply send me an email stating, "I support shutting down the skate park in Panther Hollow." Please respond by the end of the day. A non-response will be understood to support the shutting down the illegal skate park in Panther Hollow. A non-response would be understood to support for shutting down the illegal skate park in Panther Hollow. Here are those results for that call for a firm decision. Teresa Kell Smith, non-response. Deb Gross, non-response. Erica Strasburger, non-response. Ah, Daniel Lavelle, non-response. Bobby Wilson, non-response. Kari Mosley, non-response. Bob Charlin, non-response. The final result for the nine council members. In support of the skate park in Panther Hollow, one member. In support to shut down the skate park in Panther Hollow, eight members. Thank you for your honesty. Thank you for your honesty. Thank you for your honesty. There is much more to be said about this issue in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Rosselo.
Good morning, Council. I can't believe I get to follow skateboard guy. So my name is Chris Rosselo. I live in the Spring Garden neighborhood on the north side. Like many of my fellow affordable housing advocates, I've stood before you more times than I can count. I've met with many of you directly, and at this point, if you've been paying attention, you know exactly what's at stake and what separates the original IZ proposal from Councilwoman Strasburger's amendment. So today, I'm not here to rehash the policy details. I'm here to make this plain for the public record and for the people of Pittsburgh. The Strasburger amendment would gut the core inclusionary zoning. It makes major last-minute changes that have been, that haven't been vetted, that weaken affordability requirements, and that should be sent back to City Planning for proper review, not rushed through at the request of developers. At its heart, this vote isn't just about zoning, it's about values. To my council members, do you want to support a racist and classist policy that protects developers and keeps affordable housing out of certain neighborhoods? A policy rooted in exclusion? Do you want to side with developers asking for more subsidies and more loopholes while working families, seniors, and essential workers are being priced out of the city? Or do you want to stand with your constituents, the people in this room, the residents who make Pittsburgh run, who are simply asking for the chance to stay in the communities they call home? Those are the choices, and let the public record show who stood on the side of housing justice and a truly inclusive Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Next speaker is Robert Damewood.
Wish I would have written that. Good morning. My name is Bob Damewood. I live in Mount Washington, and I'm a housing lawyer. I'm making these comments on my own behalf, not, not on behalf of my employer. Poor and working people are struggling, and it's getting harder to make ends meet. Wages are stagnating, and the cost of rent, food, and other basic necessities is increasing. Nationwide, nearly two-thirds of all households are living paycheck to paycheck. I don't know what the percentage is for Pittsburgh, but it's got to be the same or worse. Eviction filings and homelessness are increasing both nationally and locally. If you think it's hard to find a home on $89,000 a year, try it on SSI or a service industry wage. No level of government is seriously addressing this problem. For the last three to four generations, policy choices have catered to the interests of business owners and investors, not working people. Nothing happens unless the politically connected are satisfied first. All of you, all you have to do is look at your newsfeed to see that this is a failed strategy. The more that working people see elected officials serve the interests of politically connected elites, the more distrustful of government they become, making conditions right for right-wing populism, and that harms all of us. Council's apparently about to double down on this failed approach by adopting developer-friendly zoning changes that won't improve conditions for poor and working people in any material way. There's nothing I can tell you that's going to prevent that. You already know that mandatory IZ policies are far more effective than voluntary ones and that they've been proven to work in other mixed-market peer cities like Minneapolis. You know that the claims by developers that IZ will make their projects infeasible or unsubstantiated. If those claims were true, they would have shared their pro forma and development budgets with you so you could see for yourself. I'm not here to try to change anybody's mind. I'm here to just make sure you know that the problems that you'll be papering over with these proposed amendments aren't going to go away. They will keep getting worse until they are addressed through bold action. I applied Mayor Ganey for proposing a meaningful, evidence-based set of zoning reforms. They aren't enough on their own, but they would have moved the needle in a significant way. My only hope is that council, the next administration, will take the problems of housing unaffordability and gentrification as seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Danielle Graham Robinson.
My name is Danielle. I live at, I live in Brighton Heights on the north side, and I am here to voice my opposition for Councilwoman Strasburger's proposed amendments that I do believe risk accelerating gentrification and displacement. That is a quote from a point that was shared on Facebook. I also want to share that I do echo what Tanisha has shared and what Chris Rosselo has shared, which that doesn't happen often, does it, Chris? So I want to share that as a real estate agent and a housing advocate who has worked primarily with first-time homebuyers using programs that the city has funded through the Housing Opportunity Fund and now that the county has funded through First Home Allegheny, I can tell you that those programs are great, but they are inadequate. I am, I am having buyers that have to wait 60 to 90 to over 100 days to close on a property. So for me, when I'm committed to working with first-time homebuyers in these programs, it is absolutely essential that every little piece of effort that we try to make, we continue to support. Inclusionary zoning is one of those pieces that is absolutely necessary, and if we could trust that people would voluntarily do that, would we be here having this conversation? And the answer to that is, you know, to me, an obvious no, because if people wanted to do what I think is the right thing, they would be doing it without us asking and begging for years and years and years for them to do it. When, I believe it was Councilwoman Gross put forth the inclusionary zoning that was approved initially in Lawrenceville, my biggest gripe to that was that it was too small of a pilot. It should have been citywide from day one. There isn't a single neighborhood, I, I, well, let me back up. I keep hearing this narrative that different city neighborhoods have different needs. That is false. Every single city neighborhood has a need for safe, quality, affordable housing for people who are middle-class. We're, we're not, I mean, the numbers here are clear. For a, for a single parent making $45,000 a year with two kids, that's, that's the demographic that we're talking about here. For a single person making $58,000 or less, that's who we're talking about here. And given the income disparities that already exist in this city, it is imperative that we not make this a choice. Inclusionary zoning is useless if it is not mandatory citywide. Bobby, I consider you a friend. I have supported you every single election. This is the first time I am asking you to reconsider your vote. From the people who have supported you from day one, we are in agreement that we want you to be on the right side of this decision. We want to believe that when you told us you were going to champion progressive issues, that you would. So I am asking you to change your vote.
Next speaker is Tierra Collins.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good morning. My name is Tierra Collins, and I live in the Greenfield area. As the chairperson for the Commission of Human Relations, I strongly oppose the amendments to the inclusionary zoning ordinance and ask council to reconsider. The proposed amendments are not a compromise. They reduce inclusionary zoning to a set of incentives for developers with no true beliefs, benefits to the people. The original legislation creates affordable housing options so that our neighbors are not limited in where they can live or pushed out of the city entirely. It provides options for developers to offset the cost of affordable units or to pay into a fund for the city to create those units. Most importantly, the legislation approved by the Planning Commission is mandatory. As history has shown us, inclusion cannot be optional. Division between the haves and have-nots of Pittsburgh cannot be allowed to continue. I also want to state that as a, as a mother who has lived in Beachview, North Hills, you name the neighborhood, Greenfield, the neighborhoods where they don't want us to live. You keep saying that we live in a city for all. We have to wait, we have a comprehensive plan for the 2050. Why do I have to wait 24 more years to be in a neighborhood in a city that's not prejudiced? We're going to call it what it is. We're going to tell the truth and shame the devil. You don't want me living next door to you, but you're okay with pushing me out into a neighborhood where I can, I can live and have to worry about losing my child drowning in a river. We're not sitting back and letting you do what's not right. You keep saying you want to do what's right for us. Well, damn it, stop saying it and prove it. I am done. Have a wonderful day.
Next speaker is Lisa Vassar.
My name's Lisa Vassar, and I'm here on behalf of the House. We are concerned with the proposed changes to the inclusionary zoning and oppose Council Member Strasburg's amendments. Those amendments would exacerbate the existing divide in our current exclusionary practices. We have already experienced the disparity in affordable housing, and the proposed amendments would create even greater disparity. We are asking you not to pass any compromise that does not require IZ to be mandatory. We say that if we want our city to be inclusive, but if you allow the mandatory amendments to pass, inclusiveness will be void. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Haley Phillips.
My name is Haley Phillips. I currently live in Garfield. In 2016, I relocated to Pittsburgh from Florida, and it immediately felt like home, not because a developer tore down public housing and planted orange groves, or because Disney promised to acquire Kennywood, but because of the community Pittsburgh has in each one of its neighborhoods. In 2022, I finally got the strength to, to leave my abusive marriage. I moved into a one-bedroom apartment with my two-year-old to save up money and figure out my next step. In 2023, that third-floor walk-up was my only affordable option in the city. In 2024, I faced eviction from that apartment. Luckily for me, the Lawyer of the Day program granted me a one-time payment to keep me off of the streets, but as of June of 2025, that is no longer an option that people in eviction court in the city of Pittsburgh have. Why are we continuing to allow this out-of-state developers to build inaccessible apartment housing that remain below 50% occupancy? In a city with more vacant properties than unhoused citizens, when is enough enough? Pittsburgh is the worst city for Black women in all measurable metrics. Does that need to become all women? Does that need to become all Black people? Does that need to become everyone who isn't a rich out-of-state developer? How many people need to have the worst quality of life for yins to stop catering to the out-of-state wealth and instead listen to the citizens who want to live here? I want to own a home in the city of Pittsburgh. I am 33 years old, and I have quickly realized I will probably never own a home. I am hoping that I could get into a two-bedroom apartment before my child goes to college. If not, I would say I could live in the dorms with her, but the University of Pittsburgh doesn't even have housing for students. Why are all of our students, first-year freshmen, paying for the college experience to live in a DoubleTree motel? I want to know, I want to know what is the, what is the cost that these developers can pay to not have inclusionary housing? Can I pay that instead? Can I work for free so I could just have a home? I would like to grow up and show my daughter that working hard is the way to get things, but maybe I should have stayed with my abusive husband, and maybe I should have continued to let him beat me in front of my two-year-old, because then at least I'd have a house. Thank you.
Next speaker is Andrea Boikowicz.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. My name is Andrea Boikowicz. I live in central Oakland, and I'm the ED at Oakland Planning and Development Corporation. I'm joining voices with many here today to ask that you please reject the amendment by substitution. We understand Councilperson Strasburger will be introducing today the proposed affordable housing bonus program is not, I keep on stumbling over bonus and want to say bogus, is not an effective set of incentives to deliver affordable housing. It will cost the city a lot more than citywide IZ while delivering fewer affordable units in the neighborhoods where these units are most needed. I know you all understand how important it is to have housing you can afford in a location that's desirable and convenient to you. A recent public source article highlighted the plight that one of you has been suffering, the challenge of finding housing they can afford in a neighborhood undergoing rapid gentrification. In such a situation, it does no good to point out the affordability to be found in less expensive, less desirable neighborhoods. You need the affordability to be where you need or want to live. Where we live affects how easily we're able to get to work, our quality of life, the schools our children can attend and how we get them there every day, where we shop, how expensive our food is, who our friends and neighbors are, the size and cost of our carbon footprint. This is true whether we make $86,970 or $37,600, which is what a single person earning 50% of their median income makes in a year. Inclusionary zoning is a tool our city can use to leverage market rate development to help deliver affordable housing to the families who are least able to afford long commutes, complicated school bus routes, food deserts, and the stress that all those things put on our communities. Without the mandate, inclusionary units don't get built where we all need them to get built. Please reject any proposal to make affordability optional or voluntary. It's too important. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Walter Lewis.
Good morning, everyone. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Walter Lewis. I'm a resident of Homewood. I am speaking on behalf of myself and not my organization, but I do work every day with children and families in Homewood and in Pittsburgh who are, you know, love this city and are a deep part of the city and really just want the simple dignity to be able to afford to live in quality housing that they can afford. So I'm opposed to the Councilwoman's amendments, and I think we should be supporting no amendments or changes that make IZ voluntary. What I see from the mayor's office and the Department of City Planning is a good faith effort to craft inclusionary zoning legislation that balances the needs of developers with the needs of its residents. It's not about punishing anybody. It's about ensuring that affordability is a part of how we plan for Pittsburgh's future. Now, I understand that inclusionary zoning by itself is not going to solve our affordable housing crisis, but it is a critical tool, one that helps preserve the right of Pittsburghers to live in any neighborhood in this city. Without a citywide mandatory approach, we risk repeating the mistakes of the past, concentrating poverty in a few zip codes, we know which ones they tend to be, while other areas become completely out of reach to many residents. We've seen what this leads to, right? Instability, inequity, and higher social costs that all of us Pittsburghers ultimately have to pay for. Mandatory inclusionary zoning is especially important in high-pressure markets where without it, no affordable units will be built. And again, we've seen what history has shown us. And in neighborhoods like mine where development is beginning to gain traction, it's important to have policies like this in place now so that as, you know, the market strengthens, affordable housing is not an afterthought, but it's already built in to the strategy. Now, I understand developers need projects to make financial sense, and, but I do believe the math will work. We've seen it work in other cities, and what we need now is the courage as a council, as a city, to make sure our policies actually reflect our values. We need strong mandatory inclusionary zoning policy, not something that is voluntary and optional, but one, something that truly assures affordability and opportunity for everyone. So I urge council to not vote in favor of amendments that will gut inclusionary zoning. Any changes we want made should be vetted through City Planning, and let's end the cycle of concentrated poverty and segregation in our city and build a Pittsburgh for all where all of our children, no matter their zip code, can see a future for themselves. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ikona Halmaquina. Our next speaker is Ikona Halma Kena.
Greetings. My title is Chief Ikona Halma Kena. Recently, the effectiveness of RCOs have been called into question, also whether or not RCOs give a clear and complete representation of the views and visions of the people in this region. The subcommittee or mixed bag of folks do not and cannot speak for the majority of people in this city. In fact, when I surveyed people in the city with less political ties, they themselves had no idea that this unelected body or group of residents were directly impacting the development or lack thereof in the city. Most people I spoke to were appalled and completely unaware of the unlawful gross misrepresentation, if you ask me, that the current structure of the RCOs in the dam meeting don't go far enough to inform people of the projects that impact the people in this city. While it states that their RCOs and dam meetings are open to the public, I've yet to hear anyone outside of the RCO core groups being informed or invited to their community meetings, thus rendering this process flawed and ineffective at best. Next subject on my radar is the unlawful specific parcel inclusionary block zoning changes being proposed. Is unlawful? These arbitrary decisions lack comprehensive planning and are discriminatory against other property owners who have held, who are held to a completely different standard. It's in direct conflict with your own municipal rules and guidelines and only prioritizes developers. You cannot pick out single parcels and over a broader community-wide strategy. Simply put, stop showing favoritism to these absentee developers, always at the detriment of our community and landowners here in this city who choose to follow the rules. Housing wasn't an issue. It just wasn't. Give it back to housing authority, and then we won't have all of these problems with not being able to afford to live. The AMI is roughly between $82,000 to $85,000. As stated with previous speakers, that's not and does not reflect the income of the average person in this city. Get back to what was already working. It wasn't broke. The problem is you started fixing something that wasn't broke in the first place. You shouldn't have tore down public housing and dismantled the program that were the next step up from public housing, which is Section 8.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Laura Chu Weens.
Hi there. My name is Laura Chu Weens. I'm the Executive Director at Pittsburghers Republic Transit, and I live in the Park Place neighborhood. Councilwoman Strasburger will talk a good game today, claiming that her voluntary Affordable Housing Amendment is just a first step. So she will say, let's just wait and see how this first step goes towards incentivizing development, and then we could consider the mandatory affordable housing part. But there are no more steps beyond that, because once you entrench all the giveaways, volunteering all of our tax money and zoning bonuses to spur development, it is a policy that justifies itself. If I were a betting woman, I would put all my money down on the fact that it will demonstrate that giving away public dollars to fund market rate development is very popular. And all developers will have to say after two years of this windfall is that their projects would not have penciled without it, and that requiring affordable housing would have been a bridge too far, killing their projects altogether. It is a magic wand, this pencil that Strasburger and Walnut Capital have. It writes them higher and higher profits on the public's dime with no data and no accounting required. As the public, there is no rebuttal to their argument that developers wouldn't have built anything at all without these incentives, because who can prove a negative, especially if no proof is required? It is boring to be redundant, but it's worth saying again here, there are facts in place, even buildings themselves demonstrating that the existing voluntary Affordable Housing Enhanced Alert program works. If Councilwoman Strasburger wants to sweeten the pot, the public needs to get some honey. I was in the meeting on behalf of the Housing Justice Table on Monday with Councilwoman Strasburger, and I want to say that I'm disgusted by the bloodless, careless way that she talks about tax abatements and affordability tenures of payment-in-lieu and penciling projects, not only because she was explicit about how she hasn't done the math on them, but because there's nothing and nobody on the other side of her ledger. We asked, why drop the affordability term from 35 years to 20 years? She responded she thought there may be projects that don't pencil without it. For hundreds of Pittsburgh families, lowering the affordability tenure is a policy decision to sanction evictions in 20 years around job loss and uprooting children from schools. And we asked, but why would developers be able to buy their way out of building affordable housing at a low cost and still get all of the zoning bonuses and expanded tax abatements set aside explicitly for developers who make housing affordable? And she said, well, we'll have money in a fund for affordable housing. But money in a fund for affordable housing, money, mind you, that in many circumstances would be comparable to the amount of tax money we would be giving to developers in tax abatement, that money is not housing. Money is not a home in a neighborhood with walkable access to groceries, with transit access to jobs, and community centers, and parks, and playgrounds. There are no people, no renters, who are the majority of this city actually being considered in the balance of Councilwoman Strasburger's proposal, because if there were the weight of her giveaways, the consequence of those proposals and their real-life implications for families in the city would make her amendment collapse from its moral failings. Councilwomen's Members Gross, Warwick, Lavelle, and Mosley, please do not overturn the mayor's veto. We can and must do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Emma Gamble.
Hi. My name is Emma Gamble. I'm a renter in Woodfield, and I am the Community Engagement and Program Manager at Lawrenceville United. I'm testifying today to share my extreme disappointment in Councilperson Strasburger and her proposed amendment to make it optional for developers to participate in inclusionary zoning. Not only are you choosing to cater to developers' interests, you are also welcoming further gentrification and segregation within our neighborhoods. Many of us here today have testified that inclusionary zoning is not a silver bullet to solving the housing crisis, but it is a very important tool for us to have to prevent any further displacement. Lawrenceville has had inclusionary zoning since 2019 and has had over 70 affordable units made available since, and another 28 units will be available by early 2026, and more are on the way. We've seen many artists, low-wage employees, older adults, teachers, and many others be able to continue to call Lawrenceville home as a result. Ideally, we would have had inclusionary zoning as a tool much sooner, but in having it now, Lawrenceville is building towards the neighborhood we wish to see, one that ensures everyone is included in Lawrenceville's growth and that any new large-scale housing development will have space for neighbors across all income levels. Councilperson Strasburger's proposed amendment will not keep Pittsburgh home for all. It prioritizes developers' profits and is not in the interest of her constituents or any of yours as well. It's unfortunate to see the councilperson choose to not work towards a Pittsburgh for all, and it's not too late to change course. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Maddy McGrady.
Good morning, council. I'm Maddy McGrady. I'm a renter in Highland Park, zip code 15206, and speaking today as a co-chair of the Pittsburgh Housing Justice Table. Obviously, we've been here many times before, and we have concerns about the amendment that Councilmember Strasburger moved to introduce last week, and we urge council to reject it. First of all, the manner in which this amendment was developed and introduced completely lacked transparency, and the move to vote it through last week without any kind of, you know, opportunity for the public to review it or give input is just, you know, completely unacceptable, and it completely undermines public trust and the integrity of the legislative process. Substantively, the amendment is scrapping months of negotiations, and it's not a compromise. It's an amendment by developers for developers against the voices and wishes of city residents. It fundamentally guts the IZ compromise bill that was being negotiated by making IZ optional, loosening the periods of affordability, and offering additional incentives for developers without requiring anything at all from them in return to help meet the clearly identified need for more deeply affordable housing in this city, as we have heard. It really amounts to a completely different program altogether, and it's not in the spirit of the bill that was approved by the Planning Commission in January. As we've heard over and over, the housing crisis is acute, and the people of the city want to at least try a citywide mandatory inclusionary zoning to bring housing within reach to all people in every neighborhood. The market is not creating these opportunities, and providing more giveaways to developers won't change that. It'll make the housing crisis worse. If you insist on trying to push this amendment through and gutting IZ, then you are making a clear and shameful choice to prioritize profit over people, and we will not support it, and we will not be silent about it. We urge you to reject Councilmember Strasburger's amendment and to adopt robust mandatory, mandatory citywide inclusionary zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Courtney Bryant. Don't see Courtney here. We will move on to Lauren Corsi.
Hello. Okay. Hi. Hi there. My name is Lauren Corsi. I am a seven-year resident of the city of Pittsburgh. I live in the North Side. While I've been here, received my education and social work here, and I'm now working to build my future and career in this city, I have experienced the price of rental housing skyrocketing and neighborhoods changing rapidly as regulations on developers' creation of affordable housing continue to remain too lax. I urge you to answer to your constituents and not the voices of developers who house for profit and not for the sake of human dignity and rights. As a Black woman, I am saddened to see more and more of my peers leaving this city. I am saddened to see my people pushed to the outskirts of this city and into the suburbs. I have seen neighborhoods gentrify so rapidly that you can't not notice it. I ask that city council pass this bare minimum regulation on developers to provide something for the working-class residents of this city. As you were considering how to vote on mandatory citywide inclusionary zoning, please remember who you are here to represent. Who voted you in and who can vote you out? I urge you to observe who is pushing you to vote no on IZ, what they look like, what their salaries look like, where they live, and think about what you want this city to look like. I moved here in search of a diverse, rich city with people that look like me and people that don't look like me, people that I can relate to and people that I can't. Please legislate in a way that encourages mixed incomes and a diverse population, as that is what this city needs to thrive. I am calling on you, city council, to pass citywide mandatory inclusionary zoning without compromises and put Pittsburgh residents first. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joanna Collins. It's Joanna Collins here, Johanna Collins. We don't see them online either. We will move to Tysona Jones. Tysona Jones.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Tysona Jones, and I just wanted, I'm here to express my disappointment in Councilwoman Strasburger's amendment to the inclusionary zoning for our housing. I'm actually disgusted that we're allowing our developers to pillage our city and tell us what to do in our city. We now already have a huge deficit in affordable housing units for the current members of our city, and now we're asking that we're going to continue to push and create spaces for people to not live. We have people who have never grown up in Pittsburgh, lived in Pittsburgh, who are benefiting from these developers telling us what to do, when we know that generations of families and people are being displaced and moved out of their communities because they can't afford to live there. I grew up in Manchester, and there's no way I could afford to move back to Manchester, PhD in boot or not. I can't afford to live in the community I grew up in because there has been greed and just greed that has taken over what we need our city to be for. If we're going for this, we are definitely saying we don't care about the people of our city, and we have no reason for anyone to vote for these people who continuously put their interests and their friends' interests ahead of the actual residents of the city. I'm disgusted. An inclusionary zoning cannot be an option. It must be mandatory. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lorraine Starsky.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I am Lorraine Starsky, registered nurse. I've been a Pittsburgh resident for 35 years, and I currently live in the Swiss Elm Park community. As a registered nurse who works part-time for a nonprofit that serves the most marginalized and low-income community members, I have seen firsthand how incredibly difficult it is for these folks, particularly seniors, to find housing that they can afford. Right now, I am trying to help a 60-year-old single woman who is recently disabled. She receives $1,600 a month Social Security disability benefits. She worked for a number of years at UPMC at a job that never paid much, hence that's why her Social Security is so low. She could no longer afford the efficiency apartment that she had when she was working and had to give it up when she became too ill to work. She couch-surfed for a while with friends and then ended up on the streets, which is where I encountered her. Subsidized housing in the city for seniors won't even take her application until she turns 62. So in the meantime, she and I have conducted an extensive search for the past three months for an efficiency in the city that she can afford. Rental agencies won't take her application for their efficiencies that are in the $700 to $800 range because that exceeds their rent formula, that one-third of, for one-third of her monthly income, and that one-third figure is $530. Well, that's a dream to find anything like that in Pittsburgh. Like many low-income people, she has no car, and she wants to stay in Pittsburgh where she can have access to public transit, which is very infrequent in the Mon Valley or Penn Hills or other places that poor people are being shoved into. The tiny modular homes and Amazon cells would be perfect for this woman that I'm trying to help. These homes, which range from one to two bedrooms, could be placed on vacant, flat-city lots. I am utterly opposed to the amendment proposed by Councilwoman Strasburger. Pittsburgh is in a housing crisis generated by developers and speculators. We don't need any amendments that make it easier for them to continue to encroach in the city housing market. I worry about my own future. Will I be able to afford to live in the city of Pittsburgh if my spouse dies before me? My total monthly Social Security and pension will be about $4,000.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Tim Stevens.
Good morning, council. Yesterday, this resolution was adopted unanimously by city council for the George Floyd Day. Want to read two sections. Whereas the city of Pittsburgh's standing on a legacy of resilience and activism joins in that global call for change, with residents, organizers, and community leaders coming together to denounce injustice and to reimagine a city rooted in fairness, transparency... transparency, and shared humanity. A little lower in the resolution, it says, whereas by honoring George Floyd's birthday each year, the city of Pittsburgh reaffirms its commitment to justice, its solidarity with all communities who have suffered from inequity and violence, and its belief that remembrance must be coupled with action to create a more just and compassionate future. It is in that spirit that the Black Political Empowerment Project, Madam Chair, calls for the rejection of your amendment. Pittsburgh has been and remains an extremely segregated city, and it will remain so without an intervention. I worked at Mayfair State Hospital for 31 and 3/4 years, and one of the accepted definitions of mental illness is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. In the '60s, there was legislation that knocked down the walls of segregation, including integrating lunch counters. The segregation of lunch counters would not have happened without active legislative efforts. To begin to cut down the walls of segregated neighborhoods without mandatory inclusionary zoning is just not going to happen. It's a tool that transformation can happen. BPEP is asking all the City Council to support the original legislation and to reject. I don't know if councils are you're not bad people, but good people can make bad decisions. I want history to look back on Council and you and for your child to look at you and say, you helped integrate Pittsburgh. You helped do the right thing.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mel Packer.
Morning, Council. Mel Packer, Point Breeze 15208. Power concedes nothing without a demand. Those are the words of Frederick Douglass, a man who learned little more about fighting for freedom and justice than the experience of all or any of us in this room. That is a truism, an indisputable fact of life, as true as gravity and the inevitability of death that comes eventually to all living beings. It was true of the enslavers of this nation, who, as we know, never conceded to end slavery despite being begged, cajoled, and pleaded with. It took a war and hundreds of thousands of lives lost to end slavery. Henry Clay Frick and Andrew Carnegie, when asked to concede a tiny bit of their power to improve the lives of their workers, answered with bullets and mayhem upon those making the request. During the civil rights era of the '50s and '60s in this nation, those in power were asked to voluntarily concede to treat Black human beings with the same rights as white people, to eat at the same lunch counters, to swim in the same pools, to enjoy the rights guaranteed to human beings in our Constitution, and those in power answered with police dogs, beatings, bullets, and death. There is nothing, absolutely nothing, in human history that demonstrates that those in power will voluntarily give up even some of that power. Power is in itself an aphrodisiac, enjoyed and used by those in power to hold down, to oppress, and to suppress those with less power and to aid in the accumulation of wealth. This cannot be denied, not yesterday, not tomorrow, and most of all, not now, as we sit in these chambers considering legislation that will ask the real estate developers in power to voluntarily concede to create affordable housing in some tiny portion of future developments. What twisted reasoning? What denial of reality? What magical thinking allows Erika Strasburger to come before us with a straight face and introduce legislation that defies reality that insists none of the histories of struggles between the powerful and the powerless are true and that we should trust that the sheep with a wolf in its mouth will drop that meal when asked? This Council, should you support her amendment, may as well ask that the earth stop in its rotation. It is that absurd. And so I point out to you again, in the words of the famous fighter for freedom and justice, Frederick Douglass, that power concedes nothing without a demand. The demand is and must be to compel, not to beg developers to include a small amount of affordable housing in future developments. Without citywide inclusionary zoning, the need for affordable housing cannot and will not even begin to address that lack of housing. Period. End of story. Finally, on a lighter note, I ask that those of you who support voluntary affordable housing, believing that real estate developers will concede that power, please see me after the meeting. I want to help you market whatever it is you're smoking. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dave Bregan. We don't see Dave online. We'll move on to Jack Billings.
My name is Jack Billings. I live downtown in Councilman Bobby Wilson's district. I'm the Research Committee Chair of Pro Housing Pittsburgh, a local organization that advocates for abundant and affordable housing in the city of Pittsburgh. My comments today are on behalf of Pro Housing Pittsburgh. We are in favor of the amendments to the Council Bill 2025-1545, the Housing Needs Assessment Bill, proposed by Councilperson Strasburger. We thank her for her leadership in proposing these amendments. This bill has three sections: parking minimum reform, ADUs, and inclusionary zoning. We strongly support the parking minimum section and the ADU section. They should be passed. On inclusionary zoning, the current bill would mandate that all projects of 20 units or more must provide 10% of them as affordable to households making 50% AMI. The amendments Councilperson Strasburger proposes would instead allow home builders to opt into a voluntary program where they can provide 10% of homes as affordable or make a payment in lieu into the Affordable Housing Payments Fund. To offset the cost to home builders, there are density bonuses and tax abatements. With these amendments, this bill will be the largest expansion in affordable housing funding in the city's history. It will make it easier to build homes where people want to live and make Pittsburgh a more affordable and inclusive city. It avoids the pitfalls that other cities, like Denver, San Francisco, Boston, London, and Seattle, have faced when attempting to pair upzoning with mandates. I encourage Councilmembers to read Krimo and Wang's 2023 Cityscape paper, "Upzoning with Strings Attached: Evidence From Seattle's Affordable Housing Mandate." In that paper, the authors found that when Seattle, similar to the bill as currently rented, attempted an upzoning with an inclusionary mandate, the affordability requirements resulted in Seattle producing less housing and losing affordable housing. Councilperson Strasburger's amendments deftly avoids this risk by making the program voluntary citywide. As has been mentioned before, we have pilot voluntary programs, for example, in the Uptown Public Realm District, and the evidence shows that they provide affordable housing without constrained supply. Meanwhile, the point estimates from both our report and the City Controller's report show that our existing mandatory program in Lawrenceville has reduced the supply of housing, which pushes up costs, raises rents, and reduces the number of affordable homes. We encourage Council to pass these amendments and pass Bill 2025-1545. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Angela Williams. Is Angela here? We don't see Angela online. We will move on to Alan Hart.
Good morning. My name is Alan Hart. I live in Stanton Heights. I'm 75 years old. I'm a retired union representative. I dedicated my adult life, my working life, to advancing the interests of the working class. I usually don't address this Council. I rarely come to these meetings. But when I read last week about the sneak attack on inclusionary zoning offered by Councilwoman Strasburger, I was outraged, and I knew I had to be here. Voluntary, any law that's voluntary isn't a law at all. It means you can flout it at will, and that's exactly what it's intended to do, and that's who the sponsors of this are. It's the developers. I moved to Pittsburgh in 2000, the end of 2007. I didn't move here to live in an all-white city. I didn't move here to live completely surrounded by nobody except rich, white yuppies. I didn't move here to live in a city that's controlled by rich developers and corporate executives, although that's pretty much what we had under Bill Paduto. And I'm afraid that's about what we're going to have under the next mayor, who was elected by the money from the same people who elected Donald Trump. These amendments are outrageous. And I ask this Council to reject the Strasburger sellout and pass the Affordable Housing Plan presented by the mayor. But we're going to find out. We'll find out when that vote happens how many people in this Council represent the people of Pittsburgh and how many of you represent Walnut Capital and the other rich developers.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Emily Sawyer.
Hello. My name is Emily Sawyer. I'm a resident of Manchester. I grew up in Forest Hills. I have lived here most of my life. And when I moved back to Pittsburgh in 2022 after living in Texas for a few years, I have never been more shocked at the amount of time we spend talking about developers, giveaways to developers in every meeting. It doesn't matter if it's the city or the school district or whatever. It's always about what we're giving developers. And what I hear everyone saying today is that we're tired of it. I'm asking you this morning to reject the amendments that water down this inclusionary zoning bill. Voluntary inclusionary zoning is basically the same as no inclusionary zoning. The gentleman that spoke a couple people ago in favor of the amendments basically said developers will not build affordable housing if you make them. But his argument seemed to be, if we don't make them, they will build it, which sounds wildly inaccurate to me and illogical. I don't understand why we keep doing this, okay? The fines will be paid. The money in the Affordable Housing Fund will not be enough. Who will build those? If developers won't build affordable housing, who will build them with the money in the Affordable? It's not enough. We cannot continue to capitulate to developers and capital when it comes to the city that we are building. We have to legislate the world we want because the quote-unquote "logic of capitalism" will continue to throw away certain people if we don't. We can't develop or business or market our way into the city and the world that we want. We have to love and support and invest in people to create the city and the world that we want. All our neighbors deserve a place to live. Please don't cave to privilege and the interest of developers and capital. Again, we make the world, and so we have to actually make the world we want, not outsource it to folks whose interests are not the interests of our city and our communities. Please reject Councilmember Strasburger's amendment and instead pass citywide mandatory inclusionary zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final registered speaker is Marimba Malians.
Good morning. Today, you heard a young woman say that she left an abusive marriage to save herself and offered to work for free to ensure that you would consider her. She is here begging for representation in what is supposed to be a representative democracy. In case it is not clear to you this morning, you are our representatives. Corporations do not have votes. What they do have is lots of money and influence, which they are utilizing to buy you and your vote to support them instead of your constituents, all of whom, per capita, earn under $55,000 a year, which means that an affirmative vote by any of you for Councilwoman Strasburger's amendment means that you are voting against your constituents' interests boldly and in their faces. Then you are going to take these same constituents' tax money and support the same corporation's development. That is diabolical. That is cold-blooded. And that is unethical. I am in strong opposition of Councilwoman Strasburger's proposed amendment because they are reliant on those same corporations' generosity. My name is Marimba Malians. I'm president and CEO of the Hill Community Development Corporation, and I am speaking on behalf of what I believe are not just Hill District residents, but city residents. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no further registered speakers, we will now take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak. Are there any speakers wishing to come to the podium?
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at K.D. Irving's Tires up at 715 Mercer Street. That's the Beacon Park building, senior high-rise, 190 apartments. First, I wanted to start off by saying I wanted to apologize because I did get a little upset. I think what you just need to understand is that when I was reading where George Floyd was saying, "I can't breathe," when my son was on the floor dying and saying, "If I could only breathe," and said to the policeman, "I have one lung." My son had two, but he knew he was going to die. He begged the police. He said, "Man, man, when I heard how he was begging, 'Man, man, I got one lung,' I said they were dogs. They would not even listen to my son. They left him. They left him for the attacker to come back and kick my son so hard there was blood around his spleen, even though the autopsy said natural heart attack. There was blood. The doctor at West Penn Hospital, it was five days. It would have been six months that I could not get his autopsy." Bill Paduto wrote to WEC, and I got the letter. I got his autopsy. On the way to West Penn Hospital, where a citizen had called me, because I'm an activist. He said, "Auntie, please come to West Penn," because they told me if I come back, they're going to put me in jail. He said, "I'm not afraid of that. They will work on me with my kidneys at the jail. But my grandmother is old, and she won't know if I don't come back. Please come with me." I took the autopsy, and the doctor was so kind to him because he said, "What kind of emergency room is? We don't have your equipment. We're sending it for..." I asked the doctor, "Please read this." And he said that my son, 75%, called. But then he got down to another part of the autopsy and he grabbed my hand. He said, "You're a citizen of this city. You demanded WEC to spray the blood around his spleen. The man came back and stopped my son to death." See, what I was upset about is that Ms. Harwood can take and do the thing for he's dead, he's gone. We get a day for him. But when we come to speak three minutes, she's busy running around talking. I want to use the example of the homeless woman who's been coming. And she comes. She brought a homeless white man. So the white man spoke. And then when she was speaking, Ms. Harwood ran to the white man, take him outside and run to the desk and all like don't give her no respect. I ask, did any of you ever ask her? Did any of you ever ask her if she needed any help? But Ms. Harwood can do while she brings the white man and you
Lord, Father, thank you for your unconditional love and faithfulness that I don't receive from anyone else. In Jesus' name, amen. My name is Serice Taylor, the missing child. My name is Sarice Taylor, the missing child, now known as Special Agent Sunshine. I'm a special agent for God, amen. The wisdom for today comes from Proverbs 15:6. It says, "The house of the godly contains great treasures, but the income of the wicked brings them trouble." I went to an NA meeting. What is it, Monday, Tuesday? I never went to an NA meeting because God delivered me and set me free from my addiction. I argued with Him and literally threatened Him. "You better tell me what I'm supposed to be doing, because I know this ain't it. This is not what I'm supposed to be doing. I don't like this. What am I supposed to be doing?" Now I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing. Tell me, y'all, what He said. But in NA meetings, you cannot tell anybody anything other than what they say, what their laws and stuff is. God gave us commandments to live by, 10 of them. If you ain't living by the 10 commandments He gave us to live by, you're a liar, you're a thief, you out here stealing. Y'all pretty good at that, huh? Y'all steal inheritances, trusts, funds from people? You're forcing us to live on the street because you steal the resources that were left to us from our ancestors. How y'all think y'all going to keep getting away with that? God sent me here to put you on notice. Tick-tock. He the one make your heart beat. Every breath you take belongs to Him. Get ready for the last one. It's coming. It's coming. We all have a death wish, I promise you. Why do we complain when God promised to supply us with all of our needs through His riches and glory in Christ? If you don't stand on His promise, He will not supply you with all of your needs through His riches and glory in Christ. This council's a part of fraud that I mentioned yesterday. Judges, lawyers, postal workers, voodoo practitioners, drug dealers, they all take bribe money from them to pervert the course of justice and falsify documentation. That's how they're stealing from us and forcing us to be homeless on the street, huh, mostly? I keep shining light on you because you're a big part of this fraud. So is your father, or are you my father? We're going to find out. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Julia Mentee. I am a resident of Stanton Heights. I've been following this process just online. I haven't come to any of the meetings. But when I read about the amendments to make inclusionary zoning voluntary, I realized that I needed to come and make sure that City Council understood how developers operate because I think there seems to be a divide between all of my community members and everyone I talk to who understands how they operate and the way that City Council understands how they operate. And I am so glad that I didn't actually need to be the only one to come here and tell you that they will not voluntarily opt into this program. They will need to be told to do it. It needs to be mandatory. I'm so glad that I am surrounded by so many community members who understand that and have been here to tell you very clearly, with very many powerful speeches that I have heard, what we need to do. We need mandatory inclusionary zoning, and I hope that your votes reflect the very valuable wisdom that everyone here has brought today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Etta Sotera. I live in Polish Hill. I've lived here for 27 years. I wasn't going to say anything, but then I just thought it was so ironic that I was sitting back there texting about trying to find somebody housing in this housing meeting. I work with people who are formerly incarcerated, and we do prison visits with our van. We visit the prisons. And one of our members is formerly incarcerated, and he hasn't been able to find housing. He's not on parole. He did his time. He's a senior. He's on a fixed income of like 900 a month, and he keeps getting rejected. And so I just wanted to point out just that whole ironic situation of me looking for housing for this person here and add my voice to the chorus against the amendments of Ms. Strasburg for inclusionary housing and just to acknowledge the problems that people have coming home from prison finding housing. So there's the exclusion if you have something in your record, but then there's also this situation that happens where landlords are Googling people. So even if they don't have a record that comes up, it's like they see this history and then they deny them. I don't know what can be done about them, but people are having a really hard time finding housing.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Lauren Lynch Novakovic, Knoxville. Inclusion is not voluntary. IZ must be mandatory. Inclusion is not voluntary. IZ must be citywide. Inclusion is never voluntary. It took Pittsburgh over a century to desegregated schools. 1881, it was ruled illegal, and by 1980 is when it truly began to take effect. And here we are coming up on another century of denying resources. This time, it's housing and the approaching anniversary of redlining. So all of us experiencing and navigating capitalism, which is often upheld by racism, some of us experience this compounded effect in suffocation. And you don't typically care when we talk about the racial line, so we shift to the platitudes and the truly wider issue of the class line. But in Pittsburgh, race and class are so deeply intertwined. Again, you cannot tout love for labor, a half-narrative of allowing white families a leg up, while the other leg often stands on the necks of black families. The new market rate housing of $1,500 a month for a one-bedroom, which would require three times that income, which is about $4,500 a month, $54,000 a year, when the black median income is about $20,000 less. You tell us the money is there to give away to developers once and only once you push out the black people, because where was the development subsidy when our neighborhoods suffered disinvestment for generations? The payment in lieu is not enough, as others have said, to even fund the affordable housing, and we will still be waiting for the crumbs for the housing to be built. This is deliberate and disgusting. We have the knowledge to connect the dots, and like the elders say, "You can't piss on me and call it rain." Without legislation that forces y'all to consider your neighbors as human, you don't and you won't. These negotiations have consistently demonstrated this point. We will not quietly let you legislate us out of the city, silently displace us from our family homes and childhood neighborhoods, hurriedly and in perpetuity push us out to the perimeters and outskirts, so we only come to the city to complete labor for your benefit and scurry away operating in a de facto sundowntown. As high-income earners seeking subjectively affordable housing come, as folks seeking water sources fleeing climate change and pollution come, as you continue to dog-whistle to the narrative of different neighborhoods have different needs as a loophole to continue redlining, you are effectively and seemingly maleficently making choices to further enshrine the classism and racism of Pittsburgh while speaking to false senses of hope, potential, and further talks of the future breadcrumbing us. Define what your neighborhood needs, because if it needs to feel safe, true safety can be achieved for women, children, survivors like Haley, who with the rates of domestic violence and sexual assault would decrease if we had affordable housing so folks didn't have to live on the street or stay with their abusers. Do you want to return to the good old days where you felt like black and brown people weren't here? Because we're here, we've always been here, and we're in the future. We all need affordable housing, and we'll say the quiet part out loud, it's racist and classist. I leave you with this. If you are silent about your pain, they'll kill you and say you enjoyed it. For the great Zora Neale Hurston.
Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you all. My name is Sam Wasserman. I am a resident of Garfield. It's a neighborhood that my family has actually lived in for over a century. And so thinking back at that, I think about my grandmother Dorothy and the stories she would tell me about Pittsburgh. It's why I moved here. It's why I stayed here. It was about community. It was about solidarity, and it was about opportunity. But back when she was being raised in the 1920s and '30s and '40s, she would learn about the robber barons of Carnegie and Frick. Today, we face those same robber barons. We face those same forces coming and wanting only profit out of our neighborhoods, out of our families, out of our communities, instead of building them up into what they can be and should be. They should be intergenerational neighborhoods, mixed income, mixed race, mixed religion. That is the beauty of Pittsburgh, is that almost anyone you meet is only one connection away. But that goes away when we only provide for those with the most among us, when we continue to force out families that have been here for centuries, when we continue to displace our neighbors. And this is only a start. Inclusionary zoning is only a start to this problem, is only a start to the horrors that we face when, you know, even our council members cannot afford to buy a home in their district. We need to make a choice, and we need to choose our people and our community, our opportunities, and solidarity with one another. We need to make sure to protect each other, not to end the bright, bright place that Pittsburgh is. We need to move forward, not backward, and we cannot kowtow to developers that only want a profit margin, that only want a handout, which unfortunately, Council Strasburger's amendment does provide, by reducing the affordability burden, by shortening the term, by increasing the number of points that you receive from city planning, allowing them to build more height in our communities, more properties in our communities, and more profit in our communities. We need to move past that history, and we need to move forward to build an opportunity and to build communities and to build housing that is affordable to everyone.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, everybody. I want to... Steve Mazza, Eastern Atlantic States Regional Council Carpenters. I live in Sheridan. I do want to thank and respect all the other speakers that spoke today. I've been talking about this issue for a long time, but I'm about jobs. I'm about construction and the way I see what's going on. And also, I am council representative for 18 years. I've worked in development. I do know a lot about development, how it's being done in the city of Pittsburgh. It's not done the right way, but there are ways we can do things. There's over 10,000 vacant properties and land in the city of Pittsburgh. We can turn those properties around, get them on the tax rolls, keep them out of the LLCs, out-of-state speculators' hands, and make it affordable housing. We don't need to build new buildings and slap 20% affordability on it. We have the properties already. There's 90 neighborhoods of properties that we have the opportunity to bring in kids to learn apprenticeship programs, to trades, learn how to build things, and see if they want to do it. But to force everybody to do this is going about it the wrong way. My organization has over 6,000 members in and around the city of Pittsburgh. We have over 900 members that live in the city of Pittsburgh that want me to speak about this and say we're for Strasburger's amendments. We need to clean this thing up. We can clean the city up with a little bit of hard work and teach people an honorable trade and things that we need to get done. We don't need to keep fighting about this. There's houses for everybody, first homeowner loans, all those things. Move teachers, move all different types of people back in these communities. We don't need to keep fighting about this. But I agree, it has to be done this way. And whoever doesn't agree with me, that's fine. That's their opinion. But this needs to get done the right way. We need to move on from this. We need to use those properties that we have that are already there. We want to continue to do ADUs? Sure, there's properties with detached garages. There's properties you possibly could do it. But the LLCs are the ones that are hindering everything by raising the rents on the Section 8 people, everybody in all these neighborhoods. That's how it works. They come in, and if you don't have that money, if you don't have that extra $50 or $100 a month you have to pay on top of the Section 8 fee, they're going to evict you. There's three companies that came out, they own over 800 homes in Allegheny County. Nobody's even watching what they're doing. And we're worried about all this other stuff? There's a possibility to be the greatest city in the world if we just think outside the box. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Not afternoon yet. My name is David Tessitore, Banksville Neighborhood, District 2, Council District. And hearing all of the discussion about the developers, first of all, let me correct and say we really need to call them what they are. They're real estate speculators. They're not building that for somebody who is contracting them. They're building it on speculation. We've heard a lot about that. I don't see major projects that much in our district, but I am also aware, there's a thing that, you know, you can't see the forest for the trees. While we're looking at this issue within the city, we must understand that there's a larger existential threat to the city of Pittsburgh, and that affects every single one of your districts. And that's the fact that in the 1980s, it was announced that the airport is to be the new downtown, the central business district for the region, and we've been moving businesses out there, and the people who were working out there are moving out there. And this is draining the city of its investment, its capability for taxes and revenue, and the people who want to live here. This is a structural problem, and it needs a structural solution. Now, I was appalled to hear that one of the council members here is not in favor of it, but the best structural solution is to push for a rail connection with the airport, rapid rail, that would make it 15 minutes or less from the city, effectively moving the airport into the city. It can be done. The route is there. I worked on it back in the '90s with experts from around the country. It can be done, but it needs at least one council member on council to promote that and push for it, because if not, it's not going to happen, and we're going to lose this opportunity. We must remember that when we had the Amazon looking for a second capital, one of the things that counted most strongly against Pittsburgh was that we did not have a rail connection with the airport. And when one of the new heads of CMU came here, he was appalled that when they try to bring people into their university on visits or to work there, they don't have a modern connection with the airport. Yes, we have a bus. It's a third-world approach that stops different places, et cetera, but it's not the same thing. It takes longer. We need something that can effectively move it in. It will help downtown. It will help my district immensely. This is something that we need to start working on now. We don't have the option of putting it off. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Rick Nor. I live in the South Hills. And I find it amazing that this fellow over here just brought up about rapid transit from the airport to downtown, because I had spoken numerous times about that in the past down here in front of him. I'm not here to talk about that here today. What I'm here to talk about is the alarming situation that's going on with our federal government and how it affects our cities. We see in other cities people being pulled off the streets without due process by the federal government, and we are vulnerable here as well. Now, not much has been spoken about it here publicly concerning what the federal government's doing here in the city, but I expect it's coming, as they say, winter is coming, to the city of Pittsburgh. And I don't want to see my fellow residents of this region being snatched off the streets without due process and deported. I think it's un-American. I think it's wrong and unethical in every single way. So what can we do? Well, the only thing we can do, I think, because it is federal law now, and the people in charge are doing this, we need to set up a Plan B with our community leaders, people of faith, and things like that. I believe certain things can be done by preempting this here in the city of Pittsburgh, such as, if you go back in history, think about the Underground Railroad. Think about private funding to individuals that are in crisis. Just talk about it with your neighbors. If they see any suspicious activity, set up a network in your neighborhood where you can communicate with people that are vulnerable. You know, if they show up at your house and you're not there, they can't snatch you. You might be in a different neighborhood. Who knows where you're at? But it can protect people that are good, hard-working people and members of our society that don't deserve to deal with this. I won't go on and on about our federal government and the things that I am just amazed that are happening right now. But I bring this up because I read in the paper that quietly, the federal government has set up a local office. What they're up to, I don't know, but I suspect that they're setting the roadmap for a strike into our city like we see in other urban areas. The blue regions of our country are under attack, and it's all political. Uh, the blue regions of our country are under attack, and it's all political, and no matter where you stand on it, I don't want to see innocent people hurt. So talk to your friends and neighbors and see what you can do, and quietly respond. Thank you for your time, have a great day. Bye.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Are there any further speakers? Seeing none, we will move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. Our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee. We have new papers, Bill Twenty-three Twenty-Six.
Resolution transferring the amount of four thousand two hundred dollars within the two thousand and twenty-five operating budget from City Council postage to the Office of the City Clerk for the purpose of professional services.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill Twenty-three Twenty-Six, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill Twenty-three Twenty-Seven.
Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Nicole Freeman and her attorney, David M. Landay, for a single payment in two thousand and twenty-five in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars in full in final settlement of litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common, please.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill Twenty-three Twenty-Seven, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to invoices. Is there, is there a motion on invoices?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Invoices are approved. That moves us to intra-departmental transfers.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of intra-departmental transfers, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Transfers are approved. That moves us to P-cards. Is there a motion on P-cards?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of P-cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. P-cards are approved. That moves us to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill.
Bill Twenty-three Twenty-three, resolution amending Resolution Four-Sixty-Eight of two thousand and twenty-four, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership for services rendered by the Clean Team ambassadors within the South Side Parking Enhancement District by increasing the total not to exceed amount by seven hundred two thousand three hundred and sixty dollars for a new total not to exceed one million three hundred seventy-seven thousand three hundred and sixty dollars over six years.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
If I can brief discussion here.
Councilperson Charlin.
Yeah, uh, so thi- this is, uh, my bill for the South Side Clean Team. Again, we take, we pick up over, uh, over a half of ton of trash every month, or every month on, uh, in the South Side on East Carson Street. Uh, this is to continue that contract with them. I want to thank the Downtown Partnership for, um, being able to work with us on this, um, but I appreciate council member support, uh, with the, the Clean Team. It's like one of our most successful programs down there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill Twenty-three Twenty-three, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill Twenty-three Twenty-four.
Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of the humane animal rescue of Pittsburgh in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars to reimburse the city's portion of illegal settlement.
Is there a motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill Twenty-three Twenty-four, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilwoman Warwick.
Bill Twenty-three Twenty-eight, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Department of Finance, and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into agreements of sale with various property owners in the Seventh Ward of the city in order to advance the Newton Street project at a total cost not to exceed one million one hundred four thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars, excuse me, Seventeenth Ward, not Seventh.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Yes, Director Scalkin, I see you just walked in.
May I get a second?
Sorry.
Thank you. Discussion?
Jump the gun there.
Good morning, Jeff Scalkin, Director of the Council.
Thank you, Director. Uh, so this is, I know this is right on the border between myself and Councilwoman Kail Smith. Um, I'm kind of familiar with what has been going on on Newton Street, but I'm not familiar with this.
We had a landslide there a couple of years ago, as you're aware of. Um, this is a Pima grant that we're receiving, so it's a hundred percent federal funds, um, for the one point one million dollars. And what is, what it's going to do, going to do is to buy out the rest of those homes, and then after we purchase the homes, we'll, um, take them down, and the place will be a green space.
How many homes is it? It's only a couple, right?
I think there's six total.
Okay. I thought it was less than that, but...
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's like, I think it's six.
And then it'll be green space after that?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll get rid of the road and everything.
Just, just on the border, if, if it's, if it is at all, it might, might be on mine. Thank you, I appreciate the explanation.
Sure.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Warwick.
Just a quick question, are, are, are people living in those homes, or are they...
Um, I think four of them, they're condemned, and I think two people, two houses people are living in, um, they're, they volunteered to move out, they're okay with it. There's no road, there's no access, we had the landslide, six, seven years ago, it's been a while.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill Twenty-three Twenty-eight, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill Twenty-three Twenty-nine.
Resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Finance and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into certain temporary construction easements in order to advance the Herndon Street Landslide Remediation Project at no cost to the city.
A motion to approve?
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill Twenty-three Twenty-nine, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, affirmative recommendation. Uh, that takes us to Twenty-three Thirty.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with Tree Pittsburgh for a restoration project known as Rising Main Three, consisting of a deforested corridor in Highland Park, a city cost not to exceed two hundred seventy-five thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars and four cent over a period of five years.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. Do we have someone here to describe the project?
Yes, we do.
If you'd want to just introduce yourselves and your titles, please.
Sure. Don Mudrick, Manager of Personnel and Finance for Public Works.
Michael Kelly, Utility Affairs for the city of Pittsburgh.
Great, so there are a variety of rising mains, as this one is number three, and there's also been a tremendous amount of utility clearcutting in the parks, in Highland Park specifically. So I want to make sure that we just take a moment to talk about it, because it's really been an, an area of community concern. We've had multiple meetings, I'm sure other members who represent medium or large parks have had this happen before, and it's really distressing, right? So, let's talk about, let's talk about this one. So, if you can kind of help us, I've got a little map on my tiny phone. I don't know if you guys have a map, there's, I don't think I can put this on here, but if you want to just kind of, first of all, explain, you know, why this is happening, and then, and then how we're correcting it.
Uh, so as many of you are aware, uh, our city's water infrastructure has been receiving a systematic upgrade from Pittsburgh Water. Uh, this has involved the replacement and relining of the primary mains feeding Highland Park Reservoirs, uh, one and two, in preparation for those to be used as the new clearwell for the city during the rebuilding of our existing water purification infrastructure. Uh, as a result of this, along, um, along the section of Route Eight immediately at the end of the Highland Park Bridge in Highland Park, uh, there was a clear cut made that is approximately two point five acres, uh, in order to install the new rising mains, which caused a considerable loss of canopy to the area, increases in storm water into, uh, the valley below, as well as the additional heat and carbon footprint. And the objective of this project is specifically to restore and reforest the area, um, from the lower landing up into the top of Rising Main Three, where it reconnects, uh, with a species selection that is designed to prevent the need in the future for large-scale tree removals while simultaneously providing adequate cover, uh, and vegetation to mitigate the negative environmental impacts of the initial clear cut. Uh, at the same time, the area along the on-ramp onto the, uh, Highland Park Bridge with all of those massive trees leaning over, that is going to be restructured, uh, in terms of, uh, vegetation in order to make it a more safe and visually appealing entranceway into the city.
All right, so I'm going to just take a pause right there, because it's also true that we have ongoing community meetings about a thirty-foot wide clear cut path that's not this one. It's actually the one that's visible from like the zoo parking lot, and if you were approaching your entrance to the zoo, that is going up the side of Reservoir Two, that was the Duquesne Light, again, because of the pump station, kind of secondary electrical backup, um, that hadn't been there before, so like a new big, um, transfer or transmission tower kind of thing, right? And there was like clear cut, again, a thirty-foot wide, that kind of new, almost looks like, you know, utility right of way basically up the side of that hill. Well, this isn't even that one, this is a whole other one. And so this one is more visible, like if you're coming, if you're entering the city across the Highland Park Bridge.
Yes.
Yes.
And we do have plans for the, uh, one going up the hill behind the zoo, they are still in preliminary design. Uh, we're going to be working with Duquesne Light on an integrated, integrated vegetation management plan that'll involve, uh, different heights and strata of tree cover that will be compatible with their maintenance needs while still providing essential services.
And maybe Director Hornstein can help coordinate us with the kind of Citizen Task Force that's been meeting almost monthly about all kinds of other things as well, that is just so much utilization in one of these big rad parks, right, for what is not recreation. And so I just wanted to kind of take a moment, I see the ca-, you know what, I'm going to wait for the camera, there we go, um, that the, um, that there's so much utilization of what is a rad park, that is one of our grand Victorian parks that many of us represent in, you know, around the city, which is not being utilized for recreational purposes. Um, so I'm just going to kind of reiterate that, right? I, so, you know, if, if there was that much of Shenley Park, I'm going to say it wrong, Observatory Park?
Riverview.
Riverview Park, thank you, I apologize. Or Frick Park, that was being utilized as either like city backstage, or, you know, again, core city infrastructure, like the water system, and now, you know, we have electrical lines as well, kind of supporting all that. It's really, it's really taking away from the beauty of the park, which is the whole point, really, of having a park, right? Recreational area, but also a way to get away and enjoy nature, and not be surrounded by concrete, by electrical lines, and by, you know, engineering. Supposed to be the opposite of being in the, like, man-made, engineered, built environment, right? Um, and we're losing it. So people are upset about it, and I want to make sure, and so I'm grateful that we have plans, but we want to make sure that the people understand that we have those plans. Um, so we'll look forward to even, this section hasn't been about that task force, so I just wanted to make sure that we carved out a little bit of time here, um, to talk about it. And of course, we're grateful for the partnership with Tree Pittsburgh and that DPW is working in it. Um, Director, you came to the table, so I should have you introduce yourself.
Absolutely. Thanks for the education. First of all, I'm Director of Public Works.
Thank you. I don't know if anybody wanted to add anything to my, just kind of like, I just wanted to make sure that we kind of took this, you know, we take this seriously, and, and that we're, we'll do the best we can, right? We, we do need the backbone of water and sewer systems in the city, um, and I'm going to, but we shouldn't be taking away park space, and sometimes it feels like we are. So, um, I'm going to leave you, I don't expect you to answer, but in looking at this map of both where the, all of the rising mains for the kind of, again, temporarily using those two reservoirs, supposed to covered one and the uncovered one, as the city's water plant, basically, as part of the clearwell, right, when the clearwell announcement was taken offline, um, I am always going to ask, because sometimes the right hand doesn't talk to the left hand, that, you know, there is a, an Elka Sand Big Dig happening along, in the zoo parking lot, uh, that will be, you know, tunnel boring machine going a hundred fifty feet down into bedrock, that it will have a half acre staging area, and be removing rock for two years. And then there's also one over at the bottom of Washington Boulevard, which will be the same thing, like a thirty-foot wide tunnel boring machine going a hundred fifty feet down into bedrock, that will be like trucks moving, sorry, trucks moving rock out for, you know, two years, and those are right near those rising main projects. So, I know, I just heard an update from Elka Sand, they had to switch their, um, one of the big transmission lines, you know, the kind of eight-foot line, lines, um, away from the Shaler Water Works Plant and over to the Allegheny, like our side of the Allegheny Riverside, because they didn't, there was infrastructure they didn't know was there, and they've like only just figured it out, and they're, now they're redesigning. So, I'm just going to leave you with that. That's a whole other topic, but, um, I'll be asking to hear from people at the same time at PWSA, DPW, and Elka Sand, that they all understand each other's projects. All right? That satisfies me for today. I'm supportive of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you, and I'm glad you're getting your projects done, and if there's anything I can help with, the Elka Sand, I am on the board still there, I'm happy to help, anything you need me to advocate for. But I do want to know how you prioritize these projects, with trees, with the trees.
Well, I mean, this is a direct response to Pittsburgh Water's work.
You know where I'm going with this, because I'm wondering what's happening with Grandview Avenue, two million visitors, it's an important part of the city of Pittsburgh, visitors come there all the time to see the rest of the city, national media promotes it all the time, you know, it's a great place for the city, but we can't get a tree, you know, we got, we got a few, few trees trimmed, but not much, and the view is not preserved there, and it's a big issue for the residents, and I hear you about the tree canopy, but that also brings me to the tremendous amount of money Tree Pittsburgh received, and what part of that it, it becomes the maintenance of the trees that are being planted, because what I see is we plant trees, we leave them go for thirty, forty, and then we expect the residents to repair their sidewalk, that, and they can't, a lot of residents can't afford the repairs, and we give a little bit of money, but we don't really help them repair the sidewalks that, for a tree that we planted and we won't let them remove, and we won't let them do anything with. But that, so I think this whole, this whole idea of the trees in the city, it really needs to be re, re, you know, re, I, I think we need to revisit it and try to figure out how we're addressing these issues, because it's becoming serious issues for the residents. But when it comes to Grandview Avenue, I'm getting upset, because they've been asking for a very long time to have some maintenance projects done up there, and, um, and they're not seeing that, and the, the weight of the trees, eventually, even though you're worried about the tree canopy, eventually the weight of the trees will pull down that hillside, and tha- that's what happens. I mean, I, I understand the tree canopy and how that protects the hillside, but after a certain point, it also contributes to the, to the deterioration of the hillside. So, I want to know what the plan is for Grandview Avenue and, and what you plan on doing there, um, in terms of the, the tree maintenance. Do you have any?
Yes, absolutely. So, um, you know, we have requested from Rad, and they've given preliminary funding for, uh, geotechnical study on Grandview Avenue, um, with the goal of, you know, uh, you know, identifying any underlying stability concerns that's going to impact our ability to maintain the canopy along Grandview Avenue. Um, you know, we are going to partner with the community, and we're going to partner with Mobility and Infrastructure on that project, um, but the overarching goal is to preserve those view sheds, um, but the underlying risk and concern of Grandview Avenue is if there's any underlying stability concern, then that's what we actually need to solve, um, and we're going to solve it, not knowing what the concern may be, we're going to solve it in a way that is, um, to the benefit of residents in the city.
So I'm just going to say, um, we have many... So I'm just gonna say, we have many geotech studies for Grandview Avenue, many, and some of them have said that they're gonna be, this is an area of concern, and that area has never slid, but then the area that they said was stable has slid. So I think, you know, they're what they're worth. We can't really predict what's really, I mean, you can have some indicators, but you can't really say for sure what's gonna happen. And so, but I can tell you, the way the trees are gonna eventually pull that hillside down. And, and for me, I mean, we're actually just, somebody just received a grant yesterday a resident, received a grant to plant the garden beds along Grandview Avenue. That's great, except for the sidewalks need replaced. And so we're doing some of this stuff, and then we're gonna end up tearing it back up again, and I just feel like, the left hand doesn't seem to know what the right hand's doing, I just think a little bit, as Councilwoman Gross said, a little coordination with, with all these efforts would be really helpful, and, and a lot more communication with, with our office and with the community in general would be very helpful. So I'm not gonna say, I'm leaving in two months, I'm just no, I'm gonna be the new Miss Brown on the other side of that podium, I'm coming down twice a week every week and saying what I have to say. So I'll just, I'll wait for then, but I do know it's a priority for the next administration coming in as Grandview Avenue, but I, I want it to be a priority right now as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2330, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bill 2331.
Resolution amending Resolution 707 of 2019, which authorized the mayor and the director of public works on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or the use of existing agreements with E-N-L-X North America, Inc., for energy consultant services in connection with the city's aggregated purchase of electricity along with other members of the Western Pennsylvania Energy Consortium by extending the term by five months at no additional cost to the city.
A motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2331, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2337.
Resolution transferring the amount of $415,000 within the 2025 operating budget expenditures from Department of Finance Debt Services, interest to the Department of Public Works Bureau of Facilities Property Services, maintenance in the amount of $250,000 for playground upgrades, and the Department of Public Works Bureau of Operations, property vehicles in the amount of $165,000, in order to increase the contracted allocation to the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the express purpose of purchasing a Rat Pack er for DPW.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Please.
Councilman Cockhill, followed by Councilwoman Gross.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. So I just want to explain this pot of money, two separate expenses, but one pot of money. The, a couple of weeks ago, I took money allocated for our postage in our offices and put it towards rubbish cans, garbage cans, $9,000 worth, and, you know, that's, I think that's been approved already. So in my conversations about those garbage cans with our public, our public works director and some of my foremen, there was the fact that we needed the vehicle to actually pick them up, right? So, so I'm hoping, I'm not sure how many rubbish cans I'm gonna get for $9,000, that's kind of undetermined at this point. There will not be the smart technology, from what I understand, which is what, the way I wanted it, I just didn't want to pay the extra expense for some computer chip to tell if it's filled or not, so. But I do understand the need for the vehicle, and of course, we have many needs for many vehicles across the board. This is just another small, you know, gap we can fill. In doing so, you know, we could, again, pick up the garbage cans, at least that I'm gonna get, and the ones that we have currently. This will not be used specifically for my district, of course. So that's that pot of money for the Rat Packer, $165,000. The other part, $250,000, was for a capital project request in my district for Brookline Memorial Park. Very, very frequented park, kids there all day, every day. Their steel, just, you know, it's, it's just depleted to the point where I'm getting many, many complaints about it. The surface just needs to be redone. It's the cushioned surface below the slides and some of the equipment there that's broken and actually roped off and we can't even use. I'm gonna, you know, I, I'm sorry, I haven't had a chance to discuss this with members and anybody really in general, especially our chair, Ms. Work, but, but I'm appealing, I'm hoping appealing to council to say, number one, my district, District Four, was not allotted one capital improvement, not one. So this was one of the ones that I requested. It was on the less expensive end, I will tell you, the $250,000 for the park upgrades. So, so this is my way of trying to get something that's very needed in my district, which was overlooked by the administration, I guess, when, you know, I asked for a capital request. So again, I have no capital, no, no capital requests approved at this point. This is my way of hopefully appealing to council and saying, this is very well needed. I hope that you'll find, you know, find it in yourself to, to support this. And I would bring up the director if anybody has any questions, you know, they're here, of course, still for that, so. That's it, really, you know? Oh, I, I did want to add, I guess, you know, we, this, this, these funds will be coming from debt services that have already been paid this year, and, you know, it's, there's, there's still some surplus there, we would be using it for that, it's not coming from another project or another district, just so you know where the money is actually coming from, so. With that, I see, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Thanks for explaining that, Pappy.
(laughing).
Papap. Papap. So, thank you. I have a couple of concerns about the playgrounds, transferring away from playground upgrades. I've certainly been waiting for some playground upgrades, and I don't see where this money's coming from. Do we need to have, who, who knows? Is it Pete, Councilman?
Interrogatory?
Oh, interrogatory, absolutely, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay. This money is coming from debt issuance that we've already-
Sugar, but all of the playground upgrades are but from debt. Which playgrounds? Yeah, I'm gonna know that.
No, this is debt services, not from specifically playground-
Sorry, it says playground upgrades in the bill.
Mr. McDavid, would you please come to the table? I, I don't know if you know the answer to this question, but...
He's looking at me, if it's my playground, you're done.
I don't know, I've got it one in my head, it's been waiting forever.
Hi, Peter McDavid, City Council Budget Director. So this is, this is in the operating budget, this isn't in the capital budget, this is coming from the Finance Department for debt service, because we actually, because they did a good job of getting bonds for our capital projects with lower interest rates that we saved a-
Three million dollars.
Three million dollars, there was three million dollars in the, the interest portion of the debt service in the operating budget, so this is just transferring it from Finance's operating budget to DPW's operating budget. So they're taking playground upgrades.
So you're allocating it to one of your playgrounds? I'm so sorry, this is really hard for me to follow, because it's a, like kind of a long title with multiple moving parts. I think, I think someone from the audience shouted out, so the allocation is split between playground upgrades in District Four, I guess?
It, it's just because of how the, the nature of the operating budget works, there's not specific deliverables in the operating budget, there's just line items that are funded for DPW to carry out projects, so they've worked with DPW, so they understand whenever this money is moved to their operating budget, this is what it is meant to be spent on.
And it's meant to be spent on?
Of the playground improvements.
District Four playground improvements, and then also a Rat Packer?
And a Rat Packer.
I'm just trying to follow along here.
Yeah, no, so it's just taking money from the debt service line and moving it to DPW, one chunk is to one line for the playground improvements, and one is to another line for vehicles to go to the LA to then pay for a Rat Packer.
If I may preface, the Rat Packer was for the need, it came, sprung from the need of the rubbish cans that I'm ordering, and across the city, it wasn't just-
Because we can't, we can't just add garbage cans, you actually need men and vehicles or people, vehicles, pardon me, to pick up that garbage and empty those waste cans. You got it? How big is a Rat Packer? Because the last time we were at the table, I was saying that I really do not, I, I think we're making, we keep making the same mistake in ordering large custom vehicles that take forever to arrive, that, you know, years. We pay the money, and then we still don't have the big truck, we still don't have the big truck, the third year, we still don't have the big truck, the people are mad at us. And then, when they get here, the big truck breaks, and then it sits over in the very, very expensive subcontracted repair service that can't fix it, can't fix it, can't fix it, and we keep doing this. So is a Rat Packer small or big?
Small.
Small, okay, I'm fully supportive, thank you. Right.[1241.15][1241.15](laughing). Honestly, we should do more of those then. So we, yes, as I said last week, we need to, even though I understand the shift in how much personnel we'll need, and maybe where facilities are, and maybe we'll need more smaller piles of rock salt, or more places to empty the garbage into that's smaller and spread around, but it's just not working the way it is for street cleaning with leaves, for snow clearing, or emptying garbage cans, so. Right, okay, that's all, I think I, I understand the bill now. Thank you all for explaining it.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2337, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation.
Thank you, thank you.
That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
Deferred Paper, Bill 1938, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning Code, Article One, Introduction and Establishment, Section 90203 Zoning Map, to rezone several parcels from R1 DM Single Unit Detached Residential Moderate Density to P Parks District. Certain parcels from R1 DH Single Unit Detached Residential High Density to Parks District and Parcel 50C 350 from RP Residential Plan Unit Developments to P Parks District in the Garfield neighborhood.
Motion to approve?
Second, brief discussion.
Discussion, Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, I just want to take a moment to thank the Planning Commission, city planning, and the stakeholders in the Garfield community who have so supported this project. I think this is gonna be a great addition to the renovated Fort Pitt Park, which has, you know, generally been known as Fort Pitt Field for many years, next to Fort Pitt School in Garfield. I think this is gonna bring, you know, transformational amenity to the community, and proud to be a part of it, but I wanted to thank all of the stakeholders that participated in, you know, bringing a world-class amenity to the Garfield community, hopefully in the very near future.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1938, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Bill 1545.
Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning, Article One, Introduction and Establishment, Chapter 902, Zoning Districts in General, to add inclusionary zoning and zoning, Article Two, Base Zoning Districts, Chapter 903, Residential Zoning Districts, to amend minimum lot sizes, Article Three, Overlay Zoning District, to remove 90704A IZO Inclusionary Housing Overlay District, Article Four, Development Standards, to amend 91507 Performance Points System, Article Two, Base Zoning, Chapter 905, Special Purpose District, Article Four, Planning Districts, Chapter 908, Public Realm Districts, Chapter 909, Planned Development Districts, Chapter Five, Article Five, Use Regulations, Chapter 911, Primary Uses, Chapter 912, Accessory Uses and Structures, Chapter 913, Use Exceptions and Conditions Not Listed in Use Table, Article Six, Development Standards, Chapter 914, Parking, Loading, and Access, Chapter 916, Residential Compatibility Standards, Article Eight, Review and Enforcement, Chapter 922, Development Review Procedures, to remove Minimum Off-Street Parking from the Zoning Code, Article Five, Use Regulations, Chapter 912, Accessory Uses and Structures, Article Nine, Measurements and Definitions, Chapter 925, Measurements, and Chapter 926, Definitions.
Motion to approve discussion.
Second.
With discussion, Councilman Wilson.
I defer to the chair.
Thank you. Well, as everyone knows, it's my intention to introduce amendments that were, that were sent to all of you last Tuesday and did not get on the agenda last week, so you've, you've had them for a week, but I do, as the chair, I do need a motion to amend. I, I cannot make the motion, so I do need someone to make the motion to amend.
Motion to amend.
Second.
With discussion, Councilman, Councilman, Councilperson Charland.
I would defer to the chair.
Okay, thank you. Well, so, why we are all here today in part, I do have an amendment, it is before you, it has been sent to you, it is, is in your email, it is also in front of you, it is an amendment by substitution, and I have been, we've obviously been, been speaking about this for a long time. We've been discussing major housing reforms, I think practically non-stop for over a year, and my stance has never changed. I'm willing to work with anyone, the mayor's team, my council colleagues, advocates, analysts, other stakeholders, to craft a comprehensive housing policy that will actually improve access and affordability for Pittsburghers. And over the last several months, I have engaged with the administration and housing advocates to reach a compromise bill that would enable a fully funded citywide inclusionary zoning program. And I do want to thank members of both of those groups for coming to the table to negotiate and spending many hours in conversation, and throughout this period, I have been clear, I will support an IZ policy that increases the supply of affordable housing units without discouraging the production of residential construction projects. Unfortunately, because we could not reach agreement on the standards of a mandatory program that could accomplish both of these goals, I am instead proposing a voluntary incentivized affordable housing program that offers substantial bonuses for projects that offer 10% of units to Pittsburghers earning up to 50% of the area median income. These amendments are animated by some very basic principles. One, more housing supply is not only good, it's necessary, particularly for Pittsburgh at our current juncture. Two, building new housing is extremely expensive and often challenging to finance, construct, and operate. Three, policies like inclusionary zoning can add to a city's affordable housing stock on the margins, but unless they're paired with sufficient benefits to offset the financial shortfalls created by the rent-restricted units, they will depress overall housing construction without meaningfully delivering affordable units to people who need them. Four, the best inclusionary housing policies recognize the economic realities of residential development as well as the local rental market, and incorporate flexibility so that a program produces the greatest amount of support for affordability initiatives. So you've, you've had the bill in front of you, you've had, you've had the amendment language in front of you, you've had the memo that I sent to you in front of you since last Tuesday. So I don't really need to go through this, but I will, so that you, so that you understand what I'm doing here. They create a new section, 902 dot, dot, oh four, to establish an affordable housing bonus program which offers substantial incentives for development projects that satisfy the affordability parameters of the existing mandatory IZ districts. The major incentives available to projects meeting these affordability standards are automatic eligibility for the Performance Points Program and three performance points up from the two existing legislation, the waiver of Section 916 Residential Compatibility Standards, which mimics the existing legislation, easing step-back requirements for otherwise Performance Points Program-eligible buildings, which mimics the existing legislation, and it, residential development projects are not forced to comply with the affordability standards established by the new sections, 90204. However, if they opt into the Affordable Housing Bonus Program, the projects must include the same levels of affordability as in the current IZO, the four neighborhoods that have inclusionary zoning. Some conditions of the standards would change, the affordability term for rental units would be 20 years rather than 99, or the latest offer of 35. It removes the automatic renewal- It removes the automatic renewal of the thirty-five-year affordability term upon the resale of a unit. It allows tenants to remain in affordable units until they reach a hundred percent AMI. So they will no longer be evicted at a certain point. Until they um, reach a hundred percent AMI, landlords can raise the rent proportionally once the income reaches eighty percent AMI. It establishes a fee in lieu of twenty-five dollars per gross residential square foot, which allows developers to make contributions to an affordable housing payments fund rather than furnish the affordable housing unit for twenty years. This payment fund will be created via a separate bill and the enabling legislation will establish clear prioritization of housing support for residents at or below thirty percent AMI. I want to say that again. It would, there would be clear prioritization of housing support for residents at or below thirty percent AMI, the lowest income earners in the city. It's the greatest area of need and it's identified by the Housing Needs Assessment as the one that is the greatest, uh, the greatest, um, area of need. Additionally, the Department of City Planning would be ordered to produce a report on the first two years of the voluntary program with recommendations for improvements thereafter. I have a lot more I want to say, but I'm going to take a break because I want to give all of you. I know I've taken chairs prerogative. I don't usually speak first. So um, I usually let everyone speak and then I speak as a chair, but want to let some of the conversation play out and then I'll resume um, some of what I'd like to say. So I saw Councilperson Charland's hand first and I'll, I'll continue to um, take council comments as, as they come.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so reasonable people can disagree if the iPod in Lawrenceville, Bloomfield, Oakland has worked. Um, Polish Hill, yes, sorry. Um, but no one can disagree that program was created in twenty nineteen with twenty nineteen numbers. So the standard in Lawrenceville that was created um, is in twenty nineteen is certainly not the same as twenty twenty-five in Knoxville or Beltsheover, neighborhoods that I represent, neighborhoods that are predominantly renter. Um, for example, construction materials have gone up by forty-four percent since twenty nineteen. Loan rates in twenty nineteen were five and a half percent. They've now gone up to seven point two five percent. And it is almost, if not definitely impossible to build a new unit in the city of Pittsburgh for under four hundred thousand dollars. So uh, with that, we certainly all agree that we need permitting reform, we need zoning reform. Those are all things that, you know, we'd like to get to soon. When I brought that up before about the, the need to do this, you know, it's always been said that we have to get this done first. We have to get this done first. So um, you know, those are, they're things that I, I'm fully committed to. I think a lot of the folks um, that came down to testify today, a lot of the folks that I've heard from and heard, you know, on opposite ends of, of this, this argument have made a, a case for. And I, I look forward to being able to stand hand in hand with you in the future here. But, you know, with the additional cost of building, and again, I think it's really important to mention that loan rate, how much that has gone up. Because a home builder puts very little of their own money into a project. I mean, it's, it, they put in a lot by, by our standards, but very little um, by, by their standards, very little percentage of the project is financed by their own personal capital. What usually is coming from is these, is loan rates. And so the loan rate going up so dramatically means that these projects are just, have, have just less and less of a chance of getting financed. Not a, not less and less of a chance of them making money, but less and less of a chance of the project even starting. So the person that said uh, earlier here, you know, listening to public comment that I believe that the math will work, i- it, it's hard to hear that without thinking that the, you know, that folks have not actually talked to the people that are doing the math, that are putting together the pro formas, that are trying to finance these projects. And, you know, another comment was, was something that said like, I'm concerned about where the incentives will come from. Um, you know, and, and I too am concerned where those incentives will come from. How do we fill the gap to make sure that this project actually gets off the ground, that actually gets started here? So you're going to hear a lot, I'm sure, in future comments from council members about the building permits, how the building permits have, have continued at a, you know, a rate. Again, I want to be very clear about something. I do not live in a building permit. As has been very well documented, I live in an apartment. Um, I, you know, building permits mean that a project is allowed to start construction. It does not mean that the building is financed. That is a separate process. Projects that, you know, there's so many building permits that are issued that will never see a shovel in the ground. And, you know, that's what we're seeing from this. There are a handful of projects that have been able to get uh, you know, at least shovels in the ground here. The one that we all talk about so much, the, the most successful IZ project, Arsenal two oh one, which was a project built on, again, completely different standards, uh, was negotiated sale from the URA, um, had a abatement from the school district. It essentially is, is nothing like the program that's being described here. We also have the Albion project, we have the Dahlia project, we have the Caroline project, all starting to work. All of those projects have drastically different, drastically different uh, financing structures. Um, we're talking private equity, we're talking um, overseas investment, not things that, you know, a mid-level national or local home builder is able to access. So again, tho- those are the successful project. The projects that, that are being talked about right now that people are working on, um, and when you meet with the home builders that are trying to put together these projects, they're really talking about these razor-thin margins, margins. These, these loan rates really make these projects uh, you know, very challenging and, and they, they don't have the access to capital that they, they did, you know, ten years ago. It really is a, a harder market for them to build in than it's ever been. And again, it's not about them taking a haircut. It's about, does this project ever see the light of day? So uh, you know, again, I, I don't think anyone here, I don't think there's anyone in this room that is going to, you know, cry a tear because uh, developer doesn't make more money. I don't, I don't think, that's my, my position. I don't think there's anyone else here that, that would see that. Where we lose is when we don't build more housing supply. Again, as well documented um, yesterday, I am a renter. When I have less options to choose between my rental units, when we all have less options to choose between our rental units, we pay more. So this, this program, if it were mandatory, would reduce and constrict the housing supply and therefore make all of us in the renting class pay more than we were paying before. So um, you know, I, I, I've got a lot more to say about this. I'm obviously very passionate about renters. Um, you know, I think that someone asked or brought the point up earlier that uh, you know, that we need to think about the people who voted us in. And I think about the people that voted us in. My district is by far um, majority renter. It, I, I wish I had numbers on this. If we had a rental registry, it might be a little bit easier to get that. I'm probably in the seventy percent range. Um, and I, you know, and that's me. That's, that's, you know, the, the people that are looking for rentals in the city. Again, a mandatory IZ program would cost nothing, or would cost significantly less for homeowners, for current landlords, for people that do business in the city, but it would cost a lot more for the renters. It's a tax that the renters are paying to subsidize these programs. And again, we've seen the Housing Needs Assessment. It's the only document that we can kind of all agree on as our, our base level. That's something that we need to change, something I plan to introduce legislation to change. But the Housing Needs Assessment says that the biggest gap is not at the fifty percent AMI level, which is, is the one that this program is tailored for. It's at the thirty percent level. Thirty percent level, we actually have an oversupply at fifty percent according to the Housing Needs Assessment. We have uh, an eight thousand, eight thousand unit shortage at the uh, thirty percent AMI level. And, you know, there are other, other gaps missing as well, but those aren't gaps that we need to worry about as a, as a city here. We need to work, you know, we need to worry about program, we need to make, create programs that actually attack the, the problems that we have in the city. And again, I, you know, I want to say, as I said last week, or whenever it was last time, that, you know, I do want to work on those reforms uh, with folks that, that disagree with me on this, that can actually make Pittsburgh a more livable city, make Pittsburgh a more rentable city, make Pittsburgh a more home, home uh, buyer-friendly city. Um, those are all things that we need to adjust. But the, this original bill as mandated uh, does not do that. So that's a, that's my piece for that, but, you know, I'm sure I've got, have more to say here. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, you know, I, I really just want to start with addressing uh, the pro-housing advocates today and the speakers mostly. I, I really want to say, say this to you. We all want affordable housing. We all believe in it. We all know the crisis. We all know Councilman Charland's position with younger people. I have a daughter his age and, you know, so, so there's none of us here at this table who are against affordable housing and don't see the need for it. What we have is a different philosophy as to how to approach this, right? And I want to start by reminding everybody here that this council, the strides that we have made over the past four or five years, um, I'll start with ten million dollar annual affordable housing trust fund that we have. Ten million dollars annually comes into this city for affordable housing. This council voted on it. This council made sure that that money was there to help people, whether it be rental, uh, you know, fill rental gaps or, you know, putting it towards things that young folks can afford homes. We also took out a sixty-two million dollar bond just last year, sixty-two million dollars. This council approved in going into affordable housing. On top of that, the Affordable Care Act, federal monies that we got over the last, I guess what, four or five, I don't know how many years it's been, but, but anyway, um, we've allocated over a hundred million dollars towards affordable housing, when we can barely keep our vehicles on the street, right? At a great sacrifice to other services, public safety services is my big concern. At a great sacrifice, we have put in, if you add it all up, millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars. My point is this. We have a different set of philosophies. Um, I hope you be respectful for our point of view, my point of view. I'm in full support of the councilwoman's amendments. I applaud you for finding a way to make it work for everybody. I'm also in full support keeping the overlay district where it's at. And, you know, Lawrenceville and, you know, uh, Polish Hill and, was it Bloomfield as well and Oakland? Polish Hill and Oakland. So I'm also for that because I felt the need was there for them. So, you know, Councilwoman Strasburger took a lot of heat over the last couple of days. Um, I think very unfairly. Um, you, I believe, have supported all of those things I just read off in the past. Um, I didn't, I will tell you. I'll never support a bond that we're paying thirty-two million dollars in for affordable housing. Uh, there are better ways to do it. The city's position should be and could be through, as Councilman Charland said, through zoning, through permits and license, through cutting the red tape. That's how we can help affordable housing, on top of the four or five hundred million dollars that we've sunk into it over the past four years. So um, to try to bend the hand of the um, private business and to think that it's going to make such a big difference, well, we've already made such a big difference, I feel, uh, is not the right approach. It's not the right approach for my district, I will tell you that. So um, maybe someday it will be. Maybe someday I'll be at the table saying, I would like that. Part of my, one of my neighborhoods would be in the overlay districts. That is not off the table for me. I, I feel like that could very well happen. I saw, I see what happened in some of these other neighborhoods where we have the overlay. Again, I voted for it in those districts. So um, so that's it. I, I just commend you, you know, um, don't worry about the noise you hear and the criticism you hear. You did a good job. You got everybody at the table. And we've got something, I believe, and I hope that we're ready to pass today. I'm in full support. So thank you.
Further discussion? Councilwoman Gross.
So I'm opposed to this amendment that we got last night, by the way. This is not the amendment that we got a week ago. So last week, when there was an attempt to force this discussion to happen, um, it was not on last week's agenda. There was an attempt to force it. And we got the email, I guess, I think it's ten, at nine oh three that morning, something like that. Uh, we got, I'd gotten a phone call from the sponsor of the amendment the night before. Uh, but we called this a hostile amendment, um, because it's not supported by the bill's sponsor. Um, and people worked on it separately. And then again, this is, this is, this bill was sent to us last night. This is, this is not the bill that you sent over last week. Um, so, you know, I'm still trying to read it, you know? So I've gotten to about page six or seven or so while, of a hundred and sixty pages while we've been sitting here. So I appreciate that you've tried to summarize for us what's in here, but we don't know that to be true. Mistakes may, are made. Um, there, there are already mistakes, I think, that I can find. Um, and so I, I'm, I'm opposed. Um, I'm opposed mainly for all the reasons that people in the audience um, have, I think, so eloquently described. That um, you know, giving increased rewards to uh, projects um, that are basically saying they're going to opt into um, having ten percent of the units at fifty percent AMI, but then don't actually even have to build them. But still get handouts or rewards that are higher than they could get now. Just doesn't make any sense. They were kind of negotiated, I think, um, as the sponsor describes, as the sponsor amendment describes, in order to be the rewards for the mandatory inclusionary zoning. But if you take away the mandatory, then you're just getting the rewards. So I, I don't think it makes a lot of sense. Um, I'll speak for a minute. We certainly have spoken for, you've heard, the public and members have been hearing me say these things since about twenty eighteen, um, when we first uh, started talking about inclusionary zoning and the need for more affordable housing units in Lawrenceville at the time. It's already now, it's getting to be a long time ago. Um, we had been working on it for years. The first discussion of a possible overlay to address the kind of displacement at the time. At first, the, the crisis wasn't that there was so many new buildings. The crisis was that we were losing so many renters who were being evicted. Renters in the homes that were all apartments, right? When you looked at Lawrenceville in twenty fifteen, you didn't see big apartment buildings. You just saw rooftops of homes. But those had been, over the decades, converted into, you know, four apartments, five apartments each. What we were losing, just as a reminder to go back in time, we were losing those tenants because those homes are being flipped back to single-family. And so where you were able to live affordably in Lawrenceville as a renter, there just weren't apartments. Uh, where, and then the home sale prices were also going up because people with higher incomes were moving in. And so people said, my grandkids can't buy a house in Lawrenceville, right? They're forced out of the city because, you know, if you want to live near Lawrenceville, just across the river, outside of the city is cheaper. And so we need a program to add back more affordable units. And there's all these big empty lots on the riverfront that aren't so empty anymore. They're gone. They're built, right? And so they had the foresight for themselves to say, people are going to want to build big apartment buildings. And it's zoned for big apartment buildings. So if they're going to build them, we want to make sure that we gain back some affordable units because the distribution of incomes in the neighborhood is shifting. The dis- the distribution of what is available in our neighborhood, which is a very large neighborhood, is changing. Um, and so it was a long, long fight because the previous administration was, was not supportive and uh, did study after study after study. And we finally passed that in twenty nineteen. Um, and that it is mandatory, and if you build a building over twenty units, you have to provide ten percent of them at fifty percent AMI. Since then, a thousand market-rate apartments have been built in one city neighborhood. And that Albion one that was just mentioned, its occupancy permits are being approved. It is not a building permit. Uh, the last thing you get before people are actually living there is your occupancy permit. So it, it is built, it's leasing, you can go by, you can see it. It's two hundred and eighty brand-new units. It was built in these market conditions with mandatory IZ. So that's that. So we're up to a thousand units. And then, so that gets you up to about a hundred affordable units out of that thousand. And then the, the newest building, I wish I had a photo. Should have made time this past week to go snap a photo because it's under construction too. An additional three hundred unit building has broken ground. It's not just a building permit. It's in construction. So that's just in one neighborhood, right? And so when we looked at, and I've, I've done this before, if you look at um, not just And so when we looked at, and I've, I've done this before, if you look at not just Lawrenceville and you compare kind of like how much of the territory of the city where is where you can build multifamily in. At first I said, what is the kind of square footage of the whole city? And people rightly corrected me and said, well, you, you can't build big buildings everywhere in the city. So we had GIS go back and look at like what, how much of the territory the city has zoned for multifamily. And then how much of that is in the inclusionary zoning overlay? You've got about 0.77 miles of the whole city are zoned for multifamily in the IZO, whereas about 10 square miles of the city is out, zoned for multifamily, but outside the IZO. And so that, that's about 93% of the city is not in the mandatory inclusionary zoning that you can build, of the, of the part that you can build multifamily in. And about 7% is inside. And yet, since 2019, in the various expanding footprints, 22% of construction, not 7% of construction, but 22% of construction of new unit, of the new units constructed are inside the mandatory inclusionary zoning overlay. So let's just not keep talking about, oh, projects won't happen, projects will happen. More projects are happening inside the mandatory IZ than outside. You know, we can't read that, I'm sorry. You seem to be wanting us to read something, I can't say, I can't read that.
Shame on you all.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. So we know in the city of Pittsburgh, the way that we've structured this program, more development has happened inside the program than outside. And so I'm just, I want to really emphasize that because there's a lot of fear about the negative impacts. But sometimes if you just have very clear rules, which I think the mandatory citywide inclusionary zoning would be, it takes away from the hesitancy, the whatever, people figure it out. Maybe they don't want to figure it out. But if you just make the rules really clear, like the city, the original language of citywide IZ was, I think projects that are now kind of just treading water, it's very, very possible they would just move forward. And we know that those are how we not just add back units, but make sure that we don't allow neighborhoods to just become what we, what people call playgrounds for the rich, right? Mandatory IZ is an attempt also to make sure that there is some price range of units available so that we can have mixed income neighborhoods. We believe that's what the citizens of Pittsburgh want. And that's what we should deliver. So I'm going to stop there and let other members speak. There has been a motion to amend in a second and I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, thank you and thank you, Councilwoman, for that detailed explanation on how IZ is working in the city of Pittsburgh, how it's already working. Yeah, so I just, I guess I just wanted to quickly address just this notion of this voluntary IZ. So we already have voluntary IZ, right? You already, like developers can already voluntarily have, you know, do 10% or more of affordability and get tax abatements and density bonuses. So just to be clear. The difference here is the fee to opt out. So in, in essence, if they don't want to do the, so they can pay a fee that is far less, right? As Councilman Charlin just said, you know, if it's, if we're, you know, talking 450K per unit, right? What they would pay would not get you as many units as the IZ, right? So you, so, so the fee does not pay for 10%, right? The fee is just a fee, right? So they opt out the city and they get their density bonuses. They get their tax abatements, right? They get all the perks and drastically increase their profits for a small fee that really won't impact their project at all, but also will not provide enough affordable units. And even if it did, right? Even if it did provide an equivalent, because I believe the mayor's office put, so this amendment has a $25 per square foot opt-out. The mayor's office, I believe, and the Housing Justice Able had proposed in the mandatory, but a $35 opt-out, which would have actually sort of been the equivalent number of units, right? So, okay, we're not doing it here. But, but in any case, if you put it into a fund, right? That is going toward the building of housing for folks at 30% or more, that housing is not going to be in Squirrel Hill. It is not going to be in the South Side. It is not going to be in the Strip District. It is not going to be in the neighborhoods with the amenities, right? With the, the Great Transit and the restaurants and the jobs and the movie theaters and the health care and all those things, right? That housing will be in places like Glen Hazel, which is how we've been doing it forever, right? That's how we've been doing affordable housing, is we have been building it outside of our, you know, urban area, of our urban cores and thus segregating our city and, you know, forcing the poorest among us to live far away from all the places where they have to work and, and, you know, use transit and all those good things. So that the wealthier of us can live closer to all of those great amenities. And that is like the fundament, I mean, that is the reason that Pittsburgh is one of the most segregated cities. And so the purpose of this IZ is not just to build more housing, build, build, build. It is to make sure that the, that the neighborhoods we created, as the councilwoman said, are mixed income and include all types of people. It's not 100% fixed. No one ever said that it was, but that is the goal. And this opt-out fee makes it highly profitable for developers to pay a fee, right? To not have to do, to pay a fee, get all the perks and not have to do any affordable housing in those developments. So I, I do want to, you know, Councilman Coghill referred, referred to, you know, advised our chair to disregard the noise. Folks, the noise are the residents of our city. The noise are the people who live in this city, who have been advocating and, and, you know, been coming to the table for, for so long and been turning out. And one thing, I think it's very interesting because I always, you know, I love to call out our friends at Pro Housing. Only two of them showed up today. That's how much they care. That's how invested they are because they knew, they, they, they've got it in the bag. So they, only two of them showed up today because they're done. So they're all, oh, we care so much about affordable housing. No, they're done. They, they've come to do, unless the next step for them is going to be getting rid of like, I don't know, like safety requirements on buildings. I don't know, maybe that's the next step for them, we'll see. But anyway, so, so that was very interesting to me that they didn't even bother to come today because they knew they had it in the bag. I do want to talk about, you know, when, when we talk about developers and, you know, and especially Walnut Capital, we're also talking about landlords. And, you know, you'll sit in, in, in sort of the briefing room with these, they'll be like, oh, I'm from Pittsburgh, I care so much. But these are the same people that sued this city and won, unfortunately, over, over this council's attempt to end source of income discrimination, right? They sued the city because they did not want to accept, that's, you know, the Apartment Association Metropolitan Pittsburgh, right? These are all the same folks, right? So they sued the city because they didn't want to have to accept vouchers. They are suing the city now because they don't want us to have a rental registry that allows this city to make sure, and that's something this council supports, right? They are suing the city so that we don't have to have a rental registry. They don't care about Pittsburghers, they care about profits. This is all about profit, right? And that's why they leave buildings vacant. That's because they know they can, if they wait around long enough, they can get that $3,000 a month tenant. They don't care about, it's, you know, it's all just a calculation. And I want to read something from, we got an invitation here at council. So NIOP, anybody that doesn't, isn't familiar, NIOP Pittsburgh is the Regional Association of Developers, Owners, Investors and Professionals of Commercial Real Estate. So we got, we got an invite to a breakfast. It's tomorrow morning, actually. It's 80 bucks ahead, but I think it might be closed now, registration might be closed. Turning Policy Into Profit: Navigating The New Era Of Tax Credits And Opportunity Zones. That's the breakfast tomorrow. And this is the, this is the little blurb on the signup page. Come Hear An Exciting Discussion Exploring How The One Big Beautiful Bill Act Is Leading To Policy Shifts That Are Creating Fresh Funding Opportunities For Developers And Investors. We Will Be Joined By Thought Leaders From NIOP Corporate, Et Cetera, Et Cetera. The One Big Beautiful Bill. Anybody know who put the One Big Beautiful Bill on the table? Is anybody here familiar? Right. So at the federal level, we are seeing across this country in shocking technicolor, a war on poor people, on working people, on black and brown people, on immigrants, on trans people. And these folks, this developer community, and our, I love to call them our developer in chief, right? Our developer in chief are the people who are waging this war. And there are city council members in Chicago, in LA, in Portland, who are literally in, in New York, who are putting their bodies, their physical bodies on the line to stand up for their residents. And, you know, it's easy to show up to a press conference, it's easy to show up to a rally. We are here, we are not agents of the free market. We are the government. We are here to represent the people. And I wish that this council could find it within themselves to recognize when we are being bought and paid for and to stand up for our residents and to require basic amount of affordable housing, something that exists in cities across this country. But I, I don't, I don't want the folks here to despair because I, I think there is more we can do. And, and at the end of the day, like when, when you're doing the right thing, you're, you, you don't always win, right? Like we may lose, but we continue. We may lose, but we keep going. And, and I know that there's kind of a, a rule of thumb in politics where you don't put it on the table unless you have your votes. But the problem with that is that if you don't put it on the table when you know you're going to lose, then you never have the conversation. And so at least for me, I can commit to you that I will continue, as long as I'm on this council, I will continue to put these things forward and force these discussions and bring it at the very least to the surface to the light of day, even if we're, you know, even if we're coming up short on this one. Anyway, that's it for me, thank you.
Councilwoman Mosley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First and foremost, I want to applaud the efforts of all the stakeholders who have weighed in on this very long deliberation. Councilwoman, you know, I want to thank you while, you know, we don't see eye to eye on, on this issue. We do see eye to eye on a lot of very important issues. And I thank you for taking the time to deliberate with me over the past several weeks, even reaching out to me as recent as last night to have a conversation and have a conversation this morning. And to kind of piggyback off the final theme of Councilman Warwick's remarks, I think it's important that while we may not arrive at a place in the coming weeks where any of the stakeholders are satisfied, you know, with what may come from this process. Again, I think Councilwoman Warwick, you know, really hits an important note. I think, you know, while we all may be disappointed to some degree over the, over the coming weeks, regardless of what transpires, I think most importantly, I think what we've done is we've elevated a conversation beyond the usual suspects and touched, you know, the everyday person in the city, regardless of where they stand on this issue. I think that is, that's very important that, that we have done that. And I think we have laid the groundwork for a longer discussion and a longer effort to achieve two goals that I think are very critical for the future prosperity of the city. You know, one is to promote population and economic growth, but also meaningfully addressing the city's housing crisis. You know, I think we have to do those two things simultaneously. And I look forward to continuing to work with all of you, you know, to address that. You know, my constituents, actually, some of whom who are here, I think I have the most constituents in the room right now. And I think I have the most constituents who actually called in as well. And they made it very clear where they stand. And I want to let my constituents know that I stand with you. And I'm committed to continuing to stand with you, to working to address the myriad of challenges that contribute to this crisis. You know, I thank everyone around this table and across the city who are looking for meaningful solutions to this challenge that we face. And I want to say, I don't want to, you're gone forever, I know, there's going to be a lot of discussion, not only to the, today, but in the days, weeks and, and months ahead. But I do just want to say for the record that I will be a no vote on this amendment. And, you know, you know, I, again, I, I just look forward to ongoing conversations. And, and again, I know that there's a lot of really raw emotion that was expressed today, that's been expressed in, in, in the past months. But I, but I do look forward to, to ongoing discussions to solve this problem. How do we promote population growth? How do we promote economic growth? But how do we also do so by ensuring that we are addressing a housing crisis that is affecting, you know, the most vulnerable among us? But also, you know, to Councilperson Charlin's point as well, the missing middle, the, the folks in that middle range who can't get subsidies but can't afford, you know, that proverbial $2,500 a month apartment either. So, you know, in my, in my usual spirit, as Miracle Jones sits to the right, you know, she always calls me the diplomat in chief. You know, I, I can't get away from that. Diplomacy is, is in my DNA, but I am a, a no vote today. But I look forward to continuing conversations with everyone around the table and around the city. And I, and I do think that while we may have not, you know, we may not accomplish anything over the next couple of weeks. You know, we may, you know, depending on what happens, you know, if, if this passes today and on Tuesday, depending on what happens on, you know, on, on the other side of the hall. I think we all need to take note. I think one important thing that we did was we elevated this conversation beyond the usual suspects to the everyday Pittsburgher, and I think that's a powerful thing. So that's my comments for today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to all the speakers that came today. Appreciate all the input. Appreciate all the comments previous to, the comments that I'll make in the conversations that led up to, you know, all these conversations. When I talk about conversations, I have to talk about all the conversations that have happened that I wasn't a part of. It's not why I'm bringing this up, but I just want to thank Councilperson Strasburger for taking on the mission to find compromise. And I think it speaks volumes that there couldn't be as much of a compromise whenever you're in the room. I know that there, you're going into that room with a full, open mind as to how we can make it work. can make it work, and, you know, the fact that that didn't happen, and that we're sitting here with something that, you know, is opposed by some members, the mayor, is telling to me that there wasn't a willingness to get something done here. And I think what was lost in that, in that option was several things. I think, I think what's lost is a way that we could have provided, there was a comment here, I think it was yesterday, someone said, "Why can't the cleaner live in the building that they clean?" That's because the cleaner, the majority of cleaners in Pittsburgh are unionized and have good wages, and they make just above 50% AMI. And so there were options on the table, from my understanding, to provide different options, to provide housing for individuals at different AMIs. And to not offer that, I think we're leaving Pittsburghers behind, and that's, I think that's very unfortunate, that we wouldn't seek to, to make a bill that would work for all Pittsburghers in different AMIs, and try and figure out, you know, how that can, you know, how that can play out with different development across the city. So I want to thank you for the efforts that you took, took part in, and you convened people. I know that we had a council meeting here where there was, you know, different, different individuals in the room, and I thought that was very impactful to start the, the conversation off, and, and you've, you've gone further and met with the administration and different stakeholders like Pittsburgh United several times. And I want to make sure that I go back to the comments that I made initially, whenever this was first brought to the table, that I too wanted a bill that wouldn't prevent development from happening, because at a time whenever we're seeing a budget with what I see as made up numbers, the, the draft right now, in terms of what was being said by the, the administration, is not, not accurate numbers, and not a, not a budget that we can really take seriously. The, the numbers are, it looks like they're, they're lower in some categories, for instance, overtime, dramatically lower from even the previous year. And so I think what that signals is that, you know, there's two months left, and they're not trying to have, the administration's not trying to have the conversation about how much of a financial, how much of financial, how much of a fiscal risk that we're in. And so, you know, I think fiscal responsibility must come first in this instance, and even supporters know that development takes a long time, and that inclusionary zoning would stall development. And so it is just a disagreement over whether or not, you know, how much that development has stalled. And so I think there is an avenue to get there where we could, there would have been an avenue to get there, to get there where, where mandatory IZ possibly could have worked. And that would have probably been starting at how some projects get done in Lawrenceville. And that would be, and so if we were to do the citywide, the way I would have envisioned it was to do what's happening in Lawrenceville, but really make sure that it's streamlined between all three taxing bodies, because right now, you know, the, the situation is that the city has an automatic tax abatement, but the school district doesn't, and that county doesn't. So that process takes years, and so I think that that's important to, to recognize, and to have a three taxing body abatement that would work so that individual, so that the projects could move forward in a timely manner. And then we'd have to accept that the projects will be non, they would be built non-union. The, the only inclusionary zoning projects that we see that have happened have been built non-union, and I think that's something we just have to admit to ourselves that we're willing to accept that. And so, you know, a shrinking development pipeline would, that would shrink, I mean, that would shrink our revenue, and that would hurt every neighborhood. I mean, right now, we're trying to provide services, you put on a, a rap packer, which is a ridiculous name for something that, you know, will, I believe it cuts the weeds, but, you know, previously we saw money being found for, for trucks and plow, we almost had a, there was an agreement that got struck down here to allow Munthall to pave, to plow our streets. I mean, these are all instances where I see where we're just giving up on Pittsburgh and how we can actually make sure that our residents who are currently living in Pittsburgh actually continue to get services. So I think that it's, it's very important to continue down the path of making sure that we put this, put together something that works. And so I think the option's still on the table in the future, but, you know, it's, it's not, it's not going to be helpful at this time, whenever there is so much strain on the budget, where we're actually trying, trying to provide services to individuals. I have to say that the, I don't think the mandatory IZ will help the people with that. We think it will. We have no safeguard to prevent students from taking advantage of this. I mean, we have no, but there's no data telling us that this is actually working to prevent what's being said it will prevent. The, the project Dalia actually raises the cost of rent extremely high, and which would raise rents all across Lawrenceville. So I think that's an issue. I think that there are, there are, there are better paths than I, you know, for the, for the small amount of units that would be developed each year with a mandatory, you know, one size fits all inclusionary zoning, I think is small on scale for the risk that we take on as a city to provide services and to actually grow Pittsburgh. I feel that this would, you know, without even knowing who, who actually would support. We have one project to go off of. Thirty, thirty units, I think, or may, oh, no, there's, there's one project, and then there's another project that can, like continually builds incrementally, and they add a unit at a time. And we've actually seen it backfire. In Polish Hill, there was, there was mandatory, there is mandatory IZ, and the developer was pushing for over 20 units, and then whenever the IZ came in, they did 19. I know you're holding up the, the, um, the water line permit or something, but, but the plan is to build 19 instead of over, I think the original plan was 30 units. So I just think there's a real conversation to have so we can all move forward. And I really appreciate everyone who's invested the time to come here. I hope to see you whenever we have budget discussions, because I think a real solution is funding the Pittsburgh Land Bank. Currently, in the preliminary budget, there is $0 allocated to the Land Bank. The Land Bank is our strongest tool to continue long-term affordability, so we can acquire, redevelop property, and, and make it permanently affordable housing. We currently do that, we have over 100, there are over, there was a big, you know, news splash several times over the amount of affordable units that the Land Bank is, you know, through the tool of the Land Bank will be able to accomplish many more units of affordability than IZ would have given us in a year. So it's, the fact that there, there isn't that investment right now, and there isn't that sustainable investment, or, you know, what I see in the initial budget, I think, you know, as it remains unfunded and underutilized, while the, you know, it's, it's a risk, that's another risk that we take on. And that's how we really will build true neighborhood, like neighborhoods that where everyone's involved, because we don't have to sell to the highest bidder. And so once again, I feel like that we're giving up on Pittsburgh and on investing in the Land Bank, where that is our, that is a major tool in how we can continue to, continue down, you know, with the conversation of affordability and how we offer that to everyone in every neighborhood. Because there's, there's no way in these neighborhoods that we represent that we will see units of over 20 or more. But we do all know the vacant and obliterated properties that we live, that we see, we drive, we live across from, and that's just sitting there, and that could be affordable housing, and $0 isn't going to get us there. We do have some leftover money, you know, from, from the Land Bank, but that's approximately $500,000, that's roughly going to get us, you know, a quarter of the way through the So I, I think this is a, a better path initially, and I, and I haven't heard anyone, you know, in terms of this amendment, I think this is a better path today, because, for several reasons that were mentioned, but I do have to say, development is stalled now. I mean, if it worked, it would have been happening. And what we get out of this is much more than, is much more than an option to, to do affordable housing. There is two parts of the bill that have not been talked about, which is, we do a way of parking minimums, and, and also, you know, that, there is that, there's that option, and then there's also, no one has mentioned the, I'm sorry, maybe someone has, but I haven't heard a lot of talk about the ADU, so the, you know, these units that can be built now, you know, if this is passed, that currently are, you know, you'd have to get a special section, a special exception, or a variance, or you have to find some, you'd have to hire probably a lawyer, several, you know, several money to go into it, and now this makes housing even more affordable, and for homeowners to participate in it and to work with a builder to, to build units on their, on their lot, smaller units. And so that will definitely increase affordable housing, and that's, I feel like that's being lost in this conversation. And so we definitely have to move forward, and that's what we're doing here today, and that's what I like to see done, is that, you know, we move forward in a way that's responsible, and our housing policy should grow the tax base, protect working people's investments, and deliver real affordability, and mandate, like a mandatory IZ fails all three tests. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cale Smith.
Thank you. I was getting ready to come down and shut your mic off. Anyway, I just want to say real quickly that I do thank the residents for coming down. I do hear, I do hear you, and I do hear your concerns, and, and I wish that I had conversations with the administration before today, but this is the first time I had a conversation about IZ with them directly, so, but I will say I wish I had them sooner. And while I'm supportive today, I don't, I don't know how I'll vote in, in the end, to be honest with you, because I do have concerns, and I do have, I don't like any IZ bill, to be honest with you. And we've built affordable housing in our district without it, and I do want to thank, and to the credit of the Gani administration, we're getting ready to build 44 more units. And so I, I don't want to minimize the importance of what is happening in our district, and our area still remains one of the most affordable places in the city of Pittsburgh. You can purchase homes, you can renovate homes, we've purchased homes, and we've done two stabilization programs prior, we just recently bought more homes to do the same thing, and they renovate those homes better than out-of-town landlords would. And so I, I fear that any type of mandatory zoning, or even the IZ zoning, would just open Pandora's box in a lot of ways for people that want to come in and speculate and do things with our property. So I have concerns with, generally with, with IZ, and at the same time have a commitment for building affordability in our district. And, you know, when I heard somebody mention about student housing, and, and I agree, we do need better student housing in, in the city of Pittsburgh, but I also agree that the universities should be paying for those, they're not paying payment in lieu of taxes, so it'd be nice to see them contribute something to the city, and this would be a great thing. And the city, this city council has absolutely put a ton of money into affordable housing. I want to see it come to fruition. I want to see it actually happen. And we're seeing that in, in some of my district, but not, you know, all over our district. And I do want to say, when, when I hear the frustration of Councilwoman Warwick, which who I have, I admire, and I hold you in great respect, you know that, I think that you're passionate, and you do, you care deeply, and I appreciate that. And I always feel bad when I don't vote with you. So, but I want to say that when you make comments, you know, about, you know, this council standing up, I lost two jobs because I stood by the community long before I ever got here. I stood by the community, and, and, believe me, I paid the price, and I've done things to make sure I, I continue to stand by the community. And it's not always favorable, but, and people may not always feel it's their, their, their opinion that I'm standing with, they may feel that I'm standing with one group versus another, but I always try to represent everyone. I grew up in a family, and I see both sides of this issue, I grew up in a family with 17 people in a house, and so we learned to compromise. So I always am trying to look for that solution and that compromise, because that's just, that's the way I was raised. So I want to make sure you understand that if there's something I think that we need to do to stand up, I absolutely do it regardless of, I've never worried about being elected. I ran the first time at 50 years old, I had a life before this, and I'm going to have a life after this, I hope, but at 66, I'm getting a little bit nervous. But I will say that I think that, I think it's important to, to mention that a lot of us stand up every day, not hear what you see in council, and had stuff that we do, you know, before we got here, and we'll do stuff after we, after we leave. But I do wonder what happens, you know, every, all the advocates talking about this, you know, making this mandatory, I do worry, because we have discussed that there's a court order, or court, we're expecting a, a decision, and there could be a moratorium on mandatory IZ. And I'm wondering what you, will you come back down and work with Councilwoman Strasburg or any council members to get to a better place on how you feel comfortable with this, with the voluntary basis, because it may be the only thing we have, it may be the only option we have. And, and honestly, as I consider, I, I'm being, I don't even consider it an option, because in my district, we're doing it without all this other stuff. And, and the homes are beautiful that they're building, people love them, and I'm, and I'm so happy that they're getting into them, because I was a person who struggled, so I do understand, I absolutely understand. And I actually created, when I was council president, a task force, which came up with recommendations to help people with housing and, and to do things. So I just will say that, I'm going to end my comments, I won't keep you, I know everybody's eager for the vote, and everybody's eager to get out of here, but know that we do hear you, and that we do want to work with you, and it may not be exactly perfect for either side, but sometimes we have to compromise as a city, and, and to work together. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Lavelle.
Thank you. I'll be brief, this has been a conversation we've been having for well over a year now. And so unfortunately, I will, for all the reasons that have been already been stated by colleagues, as well as those who came to provide testimony, I cannot be supportive of this amendment today, because this is substantially different than what both came over from the Planning Commission. It's also substantially different than what we all sort of had collectively negotiated out. And just some, the councilwoman clearly read the notes upfront, but of concern for me is initially we were looking at 99 years of affordability, excuse me, we negotiated down to 35, and now we're down to 20. And in addition to negotiating it down to 20, we're also removing the automatic renewal of affordable housing. So effectively, after 20 years, for those who are concerned about those in the middle, or those rental units, those rental units will only last for 20 years, and then they go away, you literally now have no affordability, which is concerning for me. In addition, and I agree with Councilman Charlin when he talked about the amount, how expensive it is to do development, and he's, he's also correct when he talks about the greatest need is that those at 30% AMI, although to Councilman Mosley's point, there's still the great need for the middle, but in this, we're allowing for a payment in lieu of, but the payment in lieu of will not construct, will not be able, enough to construct one unit of housing. So the, those who have the greatest need will not be addressed, because we will have to have so many of those payments before we can ever build anything. And so that, that need that he spoke to simply will not get addressed through this bill. So for those and all the other reasons that have already been stated, I cannot be supportive of this today. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's exhausted first round. I'm going to take chair's prerogative again and make some additional remarks before I open it up to my colleagues. So I, I, I want to address a few things. One is that I recognize that we have a lot of cities across the country that have mandatory inclusionary zoning. A couple that our own administration has pointed to as success stories are Portland and Minneapolis. Portland passed a bill that was substantially similar to the bill that the administration recommended. was substantially similar to the bill that the administration recommended, and then failed, and then had to be amended by their city council to improve. Minneapolis allows for compliance options besides the 10% of units at 50% AMI. For example, an IZ compliant Minneapolis project allows for 8% of units at 60% AMI, and other options at 80% AMI, and also 30% and 100%, 110% AMI. In addition, other cities, as was mentioned before, unfortunately, we did, we, we did, as a council, pass a source of income, so that there, it's illegal to discriminate on the basis of the source of income. Fortunately, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court struck that down, so we don't have that as an option like other cities across the country have, to mandate that if you're, if you're paying via, you know, project-based voucher, the, whoever it is taking that, that source of income has to take that. That would be an amazing tool to have in the city, and we don't have that. We also are limited in the amount of abatements that we can offer relative to other cities. TIFs can only be used for infrastructure-related improvements. LURDAs only last for 10 years. So again, we are just not, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison with other cities. I wish, I deeply wish that the administration, off the bat, would have proposed a bill, first of all, worked with council members to craft the bill, before surprising us with language at the Planning Commission. That would have been incredibly helpful if we had been able to negotiate before he sent it to the Planning Commission, and to be able to weigh in and understand what was in the bill, rather than seeing slide decks from our planning, our planning department, and not understanding what's in the bill. It was four bills in one. It was very complicated, and we did not get to see it before it was, until about 24 hours before it was submitted to the Planning Commission. So that would have been the time to negotiate on this, and my effort to negotiate after the fact, unfortunately, was met with an unwillingness to move from the 10% at 50% AMI, which, you know, was a huge part of the reason, unfortunately, that I had to turn a different way. It just wasn't going to work. And I think what's been lost in the endless debates are a couple of things. Affordable housing doesn't just mean inclusionary zoning. I think a couple of people have recognized that, but I wanted to say it again. And I think, as importantly, IZ doesn't necessarily mean what's in the administration's original bill. It's incredibly unfortunate that support for or opposition to this bill has been conflated with support or opposition to producing more affordable housing in Pittsburgh. Affordable housing is far broader than how many units in brand-new apartment buildings are reserved for lower-income renters. Affordable housing also means homeownership opportunities, it, which is not addressed in this bill. It also means rental options at all price points in all kinds of structures across all 90 neighborhoods. It means the ability to both obtain a housing choice voucher and successfully use it to secure a living space. Unfortunately, our stunningly dysfunctional voucher program at present that needs to be fixed, as part of a separate process, this bill does not address that. Affordable housing also means using our funding and URA funding strategically to help with large-scale li-tap projects that are nearly impossible to cobble together, and identifying creative solutions to fully fund our land bank and turn vacant and abandoned lots into homes, as Councilman Wilson is diligently working to do. Mandatory IZ was marketed as the primary tool for creating affordable units, rather than what it is, a program that can create affordable options for some renters under very particular market conditions or incentive structures. I think that what I'm putting forth is a common sense solution. It's not the perfect solution. I would, I, I expect that in, over the course of two years, maybe not working day and night to do this, that we can continue to think about this and discuss it and learn from the data at this two-year, proposed two-year look back. Because I truly hope that this is the first iteration of many, akin to the gold standard Montgomery County, Maryland, that has been in operation for more than 30 years. I hope that this is the first of many iterations. But I, I think it's a common sense solution for a few reasons. It keeps intact the original inclusionary zoning overlay that exists in the four neighborhoods we've already heard about. It offers the same density and process incentives as the mayor's original bill. Throughout our conversations, I've heard that the incentives in the original IZ bill were so robust and so pro-development that they would in no way discourage housing development. And if that's the case, developers will take advantage of them and opt into the program. If it turns out that they're not compelling enough, we have the opportunity to explore this when we take this deep dive at the two-year look back. And however, if we enacted the mayor's bill and the standards were wrong, it would be the opposite. Building would, building apartments would halt, jobs and revenue would evaporate, and rents would continue to rise. This pass, path also protects the city from challenges presented by the existing lawsuit that, I thank you, Councilwoman Kail Smith for bringing that up. There's an existing lawsuit against the mandatory IZ program that has weighed heavily on me through this process. And I truly hope that this program in those neighborhoods that had a deliberative process will withstand an injunction and a lawsuit. If it doesn't, as the councilwoman pointed out, we now have a program that we can build on in the future, rather than being left with nothing. To those who say that we should just fight the lawsuit, I agree, but I remind everyone of the fate of the rental registry program 20 years after we began fighting about that. This path, of course, as barely been mentioned, still allows us to pass very badly needed parking reforms that lower the cost of all sorts of, all sorts of construction, including for affordable housing, and accessory dwelling units, both of which are very much needed in the city, both of which are excellent policies that were worked on diligently by our planners and transportation planners. I look forward to passing this bill eventually, and using it to win affordable housing commitments for new housing in my district. I was very proud, after a very long two-year process of the 50%, 15% affordability in the Meridian-Shakespeare-Giannego project that will soon come online. And I hope that my colleagues will do the same in their districts. But it does, this does so without killing great projects like Module's proposal in Hazelwood, and other projects in other neighborhoods that want to grow. It would be great to formulate a tailored program for Pittsburgh, like many IZ advocates have pointed out exist in these other cities we've talked about, and so many other cities, but it's just, we didn't have the opportunity, given the way that this was ruled out. I know I've been talking for a long time, but often at this table, I sit and listen to my colleagues, and I'm going to just take a little bit more space up today, and lay out why I believe the LURDA and the Fee-in-Lie program is, is a really important piece of this. So the Affordable Housing Bonus Program offers participating projects many benefits, including a buy-right enhanced LURDA. Separate legislation that I look forward to working with colleagues to introduce will also raise the enhanced LURDA cap, so for all eligible projects, to $425,000, and provide annual adjustments based on the Federal Reserve's Final Demand Construction Index. This, this, this increase, which was thankfully drafted by the administration, I do thank them for that, represents a much-needed update to our LURDA ceiling, which has not been changed in over a decade, despite enormous spikes in the cost of construction and project financing. And the hope would be that other two taxing bodies also pass this, and then we have one front door to a buy-right LURDA that is mirrored by our other taxing bodies. So school board doesn't have to discuss abatements or projects. They can focus what they need to focus on, which is our schools and our education program. The intent, as it was in the mandatory program, is to reward projects that contribute to the city's affordable housing stock with a 10-year enhanced abatement. And while majority of developments will likely remain under the current $250,000 cap, especially with this shrinking common level ratio that we know we're being hit with, until a county-wide reassessment takes place, some very large projects may receive a larger abatement due to this new formula. The concept of providing a city tax exemption in exchange for affordable housing support is clearly not new, as we've heard. It's already a feature of the existing IZ districts. It was an essential component of the mandatory IZ proposal, and the authors of the original bill recognized correctly that affordability mandates are destined to fail unless paired with incentives that offset the revenue losses the mandates create. But to be absolutely clear, in this proposal, if there's no affordability contribution, there's no enhanced abatement. A purely market-rate development will not realize any new tax break because of this program. It's only available to projects that have onsite affordable units, or comply with making the Fee-in-Lie contribution to the Affordable Housing Payments Fund. I would like to just take a moment to lay out why it's a good deal for the city for affordable housing support, to exchange future tax revenue for upfront contributions through the Fee-in-Lie. Because I know that's been attacked, and I know that's a big target of, of some people who are not, not in favor of this. Let's start with just how the Fee-in-Lie formula was generated, and how it would play out in practice. When we were still attempting to find a path to a mandatory program, I requested that a Fee-in-Lie compliance option be created, since it is the hallmark of a successful IZ program, as we've seen across the country. These cities recognize that while onsite affordable units are great, they are necessary, there are many, many other ways we can improve housing quality and access through the millions of dollars generated in Fee-in-Lie programs. So we worked, we wrote something up. The administration was very helpful here. And however, they reverse engineered a payment formula that was intended to represent the cost of developing a new build affordable unit, based on recent projects that received URA or city support. And I can understand that rationale. The result was a $35 per gross residential square foot rate that anticipated an average fee of about $400,000. So you'd pay $400,000 instead of building a unit onsite. That is far higher than peer cities that have IZ programs, and it almost assuredly would have never been used, making it pretty much irrelevant. But in this program, we've lowered the fee to $25 per gross residential square foot. That represents an expected fee, per-unit fee, depending on the layout of the building, about $280,000. If you have a 100-unit building, that would be a 10-unit affordability standard. 10 times, 10 units times $280,000 is $2.83 million in support of an Affordable Housing Payments Fund. So for this 100-unit building, the trade-off is that the city receives nearly $3 million in funds that are earmarked for affordable housing initiatives prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy, rather than collect what is likely to be $150,000, $200,000 in yearly property tax revenues over 10 years. So that means the city would be collecting more revenue, getting it in our hands faster, and ensuring that it gets directed towards affordable housing programs. If there's a project that did receive the maximum abatement of $425,000 annually, again, since only the largest projects would hit that cap, it would be maybe, let's just say, a 300-unit project with 30 affordable units. That would be $8.5 million in affordable housing support, compared with the $4.25 million in tax abatement over the next decade. That's a big win for the city, and importantly, for lower-income residents most in need of our support. So then the question of how the funds are used. The legislation creating the payments fund will establish first priority for housing initiatives serving residents at or below 30% AMI, want as much of this money as possible directed to the residents who need it the most. And I, you know, there's a talking point around whether the fee is too low, because it doesn't match the expected cost of producing a new affordable unit. The latter part is true. A new build affordable unit does run north of $400,000 a unit, because housing is expensive, and governments tend to build less efficiently than private developers. But the argument doesn't hold up. Much like brand-new apartment buildings are a tiny fraction of the overall rental housing stock, brand-new affordable units are a small part of the affordable housing inventory. You might not be able to build an affordable unit for $280,000 today, but you could buy two affordable homes in cash. You could provide $1,000 a month rent subsidy to 23 people for an entire year. You could front 10% down payment on a $200,000 home for 14 first-time homebuyers who want to stay anchored in their neighborhood, but feel like mortgage is out of reach, because they struggle to build up savings. Once you start considering just a few of the myriad ways we could use this money, $280,000 can do a lot for affordable housing. And then start by, then start multiplying it by the amounts of these units, of these projects, and think about all the possibilities. With millions of dollars on hand, we could start to build up the type of fund that provides gap financing for li-tap or even other IZ projects. Given time to grow, that's what successful housing trust funds can do. We won't have $100 million revolving fund like Montgomery County, Maryland overnight, but we can start to build a robust one with this program. So that's my argument for why I think that this is a great, a great middle ground, and maybe not the end-all, be-all, maybe not the last of this, but truly would appreciate my colleague's support in this alternative proposal. Thank you. I will turn it over to Councilwoman Gross.
So back to the topic of this being completely entirely different language than the Planning Commission approved. So the January vote to approve this bill, which is a combination, it's true, of the inclusionary zoning citywide that was mandatory, plus the ADUs, plus the parking minimums, I reintroduced so that it could finally come to a vote, or we could finally have this discussion. This amendment that was put in front of us this morning is entirely different language. Now, I always say, and we should always ensure, that we will never sneak zoning through on you quickly, ever. That is just not the way it is going to work in the city, right? Every time, there are citizen concerns, rightful citizen concerns to make sure that they understand what is being proposed in zoning, that they have time to process, talk to their neighbors, you know, cogitate, change their mind about it, what have you, right? Have those community conversations, maybe talk to somebody who's thought of something they haven't. I always say, listen, we do not sneak through zoning legislation, right? There will be robust public conversation. It has to go to Planning Commission. If it's been introduced by a council member, it has to go to the Planning Commission. You will, there is built-in wait times, where there has to be a certain number of days or weeks before any action can be taken. And those have several iterations, right? They can't rush it through a Planning Commission. There has to be citizen notification. You have to have plenty of time to be able to read it. Then you get to go to the Planning Commission and have public comment. Then they take a vote. Then there's a clock that starts again, and it gets sent, and it is date and timestamped when it goes from Planning Commission to the city clerk's office. And then we are required to have the public hearings, and we can't rush those through. We can't, like, receive the legislation and then have the public hearing really quickly. We have to wait. We have to give public notice. That is so that you can understand brand-new language, so it isn't brand-new language that you haven't had time to do. And then, after we have our public hearing, again, there's up to 120 days that council has to act. That's the phase that we're in for last year's language. This is this morning's language. So there is no taking this to final vote. I mean, again, council members haven't read this, let alone the public hasn't read it. And we're taking one person's word, but I'm not even sure that you can 100% swear the words that you just said are in here, because mistakes are made. That just happens when people are rushing things through. So this legislation has to go to Planning Commission, because it has never been to Planning Commission. This language handed to us this morning has never been to Planning Commission. So again, I'm going to vote no, because I, I disagree with what we're told is in there. But I'm also, I think, going to vote no, because it should not be coming to a vote at Standing Committee today. And again, I challenge my colleagues to talk about what's in here, and how it's written. And it's certainly different than even what was put on, you know, going to be put on the table last week. Last week, the, again, it was emailed to us last Wednesday morning. was emailed to us last Wednesday morning, was a citywide overlay that was outside of the mandatory inclusion overlay. And when I said, you know, I really don't think that's allowed, now it's rewritten for this week and there is no citywide overlay. So it's, this is, it's shifted many times. So, you know, again, I'm going to vote no. I'm going to remind the table that inside the IZO, in Lawrenceville alone, there's been 1,000 units built. In the IZO, since it's expanded, there's 1,400 units that have been built. So that gets us up to 140 affordable apartments. And that is 20% of all the development that's happened in developable parcels in the city. And the territory inside the mandatory inclusionary zoning is less than 1% of the developable land in the city. So, this notion that it has stopped development, stop saying that, people. That is not what has happened. So, I'll leave it there. But again, you know, I hope that councilmembers vote no on this amendment. But even if they do, the bill cannot be approved. If you vote to amend, to accept this piece of, this 140 pages that you just got this morning as an amendment by substitution, it's an entirely new bill. And so you cannot vote to approve it. We don't vote to approve zoning language, right? So, if you vote, you should vote no. But if you vote to vote yes, to amend and to accept this as the new bill, you can't just sneakily just say it goes to final vote. It hasn't had any public process. Okay. So I'll stop there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to address two things, as Councilwoman Works pointed out when I said, "Don't listen to the noise." I didn't mean your comments. I appreciate your comments. I see your passion. What I really should have prefaced was negative noise, in some degree insults. Excuse me. Insults in some cases that were unwarranted, okay? So that's what I meant by the noise, the negative noise and the insults that. And all we're looking for is the same respect that we give you, truly, right? I don't feel, I get it. I don't feel we get it at this table. So, I want to point out two things. Councilman Wilson made up two very excellent points. For all of our knowledge, right, the three projects that are going on in the city of Pittsburgh that are affordable housing, okay, three projects, all are using outside workers. They were not using our unions, okay? These are, our unions, as Steve Mazza with the carpenters here will tell you, we care about jobs in our city of Pittsburgh. We care about the funding. We care about the commerce. We care about who is making that money and where they spend it. These three jobs, here's what the, here's what the developers are doing, okay? So, you know, at least on these three projects. Easy way to make up that money that we're forcing them to build to these units and affordable is simple, cut out our organized labor. And that is unacceptable. These folks who are working on these jobs, who knows where they're from? I don't know. You don't know. They're from all over the country, probably. The money they're making is going back to Dallas, wherever they're from. The money that our local labor unions are making are staying at least, if not inside the city of Pittsburgh, inside Western Pennsylvania the region, okay? So, it's, for a developer to cut union jobs because we're forcing their hand, they will find a way around us, okay? They always do. Just like you'll see a lot of 19-unit projects, right? I would tell you, I know of a couple already that are, you know, proposed. Why would they build a 24-unit project? Well, they won't. They're going to, you're going to see 19. You'll see a lot of 19-unit projects that are going to be built. So, to Councilman Wilson's point, you know, the fact that our unions and that our local people who we pay a good prevailing wage, if that means anything to you, well, you know what? It's a ripple effect from forcing the hand of developers. So, and it's one that's legal and they're going to get away with, and they're going to get away with every time. Just like they'll build 19 units, they'll find a way. Also, the land bank, as Councilwoman Wilson pointed out, you know, there you have a good way, besides zoning, besides cutting the red tape, besides, you know, making government easier for people to build. The land bank is ripe to help us out with this situation. We have thousands of lots throughout the city of Pittsburgh. That's what we should be focusing on. Also, I just want to say this. Again, back to a difference of philosophy. I truly believe it is my duty to not support inclusionary zoning citywide, simply because I believe the philosophy is, if we build many, many, that's a supply and demand issue. If many, many houses are built, and I decide I'm tired of cutting my grass and shoveling my wok, and I buy a condo in my neighborhood that was built for $300,000, you know, that frees up my home that I moved out of. And my home is, in citywide, is considered affordable still, I would say. So, so, you know, the philosophy is different. I just wish that people would respect the fact that I feel, and other members who are going to vote for this today, the fact that, you know, we just feel it's smarter to create more housing rather than slap the wrist of private industry. It's going to benefit us in the long run to do it that way. And the fact that we're cutting union jobs out of it, it's unacceptable. And, you know, again, one of many ripple effects that will happen, so. Madam Chair, again, thank you for your leadership on this. I know it wasn't easy. I know you got a lot of grief from it. But in the end, I think you did the exact right thing. And I wanted to say, one other thing was your funding that you say you can, you know, rather than put in affordable housing to create a fund, that gives us flexibility. That gives us a better way of approaching and attacking affordable housing. I feel like that's probably one of the best things that you put in, one of the best amendments you put in. So, I'm in full support of that. I'll be in support of the bill today. Thank you again.
Thank you. Councilman Charland, Councilperson Charland.
Thank you. You know, I do want to address, Councilman Coghill, if you do, I don't think it would be good for you to sell your house because I think it is a good house to raise a grandchild in. So, congratulations. I wanted to say that publicly. But, you know, one of the things that does happen when we're all fighting for something that we believe in and we believe in so deeply, and obviously this is something that I cared about a whole lot. Actually, if I can back up for you in a second more, this is something that Councilman Mosley and I have talked about a lot when we were coming in together. Actually, the first time we really kind of sat down together, we talked about this. And, you know, we kind of have jokingly, you know, started calling him the professor because Councilman Mosley is really well researched on this. And, you know, it's something that you and I have talked about a lot.
Couple of names.
Well, I say here he's called the diplomat, or, but, but I, you know, we've all talked about, you know, for a while there, you were like, you've got to talk about Montgomery County. You've got to talk about Montgomery County. I just listened to this podcast about Montgomery County. I just read this book about Montgomery County. And, you know, in this process, when I'm, you know, I obviously have been so dug in on this, I introduced legislation that I thought would have worked, you know, almost a year ago now, and going through this process. You know, you fight for something you believe in. You sometimes maybe don't know if it's something that, if you're right, if you're still right, because you're fighting for something you believe in so much. And sometimes you're like, you know, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I'm wrong. And I will say, through this whole process, there's a lot of times where like, maybe, maybe I am wrong on this. Maybe I am wrong. And overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly, when I check on how other cities' programs are working, I'm not wrong. And it just, you get reinforced over and over again. So I, you know, I believe that the planning department did not expect that we would do the homework to call through other cities and call through other city councilmembers. And one thing, you know, for all of us here to know, is that other colleagues, you know, and other city councils are more than willing to talk to you about the state of their programs, the state of building in their city. They're happy to talk to you about their, you know, every city in America is dealing with some form of a housing crisis. You know, some have got a better handle on it, cities like Houston. Some cities have made mistakes, cities like LA that we don't want to make here. But, you know, so I did the work of just calling city councilmembers. I called county councilmembers in Montgomery County and in Minneapolis and Portland, Los Angeles. I even actually, from the suggestion of one of our guests here, Chris Roslot, called Baltimore because he's like, you've got to check out this Baltimore program. You've got to see this Baltimore program. I, you know, the Baltimore program is literally nothing like anything that we're talking about here. It's a fantastic program. I believe actually that I spoke to the, I was kind of joking, it was like the Councilwoman Gross of Baltimore. And I would love to bring her here and have her talk about the program that they're working on there, the program that she really championed that I think is working very effectively. So, you know, I challenge us, we make this mistake in Pittsburgh constantly, where we believe we are the special snowflake. We're the only city that's like on the cusp of the Rust Belt with, you know, mid-Atlantic prices and Midwest, or mid-Atlantic labor costs and construction costs and Midwestern rents. We're not the only city like this. There's so many other cities that are going through versions of this. We just, we had this idea that was created in 2019, and there's just this pride of authorship to believe that 50% AMI is the only way that this can work. And it's just frankly not tailored for a city like Pittsburgh. It's not tailored for the needs that Pittsburgh has. And, you know, it continues to be really frustrating to see people advocate for a policy that is not written for Pittsburgh. It's not written for Pittsburgh by and large. And it's, it's based off of not learning the lessons that other cities have learned. Council, Councilperson Strasburger brought up the fact that, you know, when we look at cities like Portland, they had a program very similar to this program in Portland, the original IZ program. And now there's Portland 2.0. If you call Portland's city council right now, they'll tell you Portland 2.0 isn't even really working that well. And they need to figure out what Portland 2.5 or 3.0 might be. Their needs are a lot different than ours. They, you know, on a migration pattern, West Coast construction, all those kind of things there. But, you know, it is, it is a mistake that we make when we think that what, you know, that we can't learn from other places because we desperately need to. We desperately need to not make the same mistakes that Los Angeles made and not, you know, the same mistakes that a lot of other cities that are pricing people out have made here. I do want to address one other thing here. The, you know, there was a conversation about the, about NIOP and their breakfast tomorrow. You know, I do want to acknowledge that we do, you know, we love to demonize the developers and love to think that they're so terrible here. But, you know, the keynote speaker tomorrow at the NIOP event is the Allegheny County Executive Director's, Director on Economic Development. So, like, this is not some sort of Trump rally that's happening tomorrow. You know, it's, the governor staff's going to be there. You know, are those, are those, Councilwoman, are those, you know, are those evil people there? The other thing that I want to point out, and this is my last point here, is this just, this example that I think about when we talk about how important it is to build more in the city. So, if you think of like the most extreme example, if Pittsburgh added a million units tomorrow, would everyone's rents go up or would they go down? All of our rents would go down. And what we're trying to do right now, we're trying to make sure that less units are built. Right now, we're about, we average about 8,000 units built every year. And with those 8,000 units, we're not counting the thing, the units that come offline every single day in my district. Every single day in Councilwoman Kell Smith and Councilwoman Coghill's district, these units that become vacant and dilapidated and we now have to tear down. We are becoming a city with less options for supply. We're not keeping up with demand. It's not your district. I was referring to you. But, but anyway, I just, I think that's, it's so important to make sure we've got our facts right on this and to do our research and to not, you know, not think that something should work just because we believe that it should work. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments for second round, we'll now take a vote on, reminder, this is the amendment proposal, not the bill as amended. So, we'll call vote, please. Mr. Charland.
Yes.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
No.
Mr. Lavell. Mr. Mosley.
No.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
No.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger Chair.
Aye.
Five ayes, four noes. Amendment passes. Now a discussion on the bill as amended, excuse me. Council President.
Yes. At this point, excuse me, at this point, I would like to offer up a motion to recommit the bill to the Planning Commission for report and recommendation.
Second. Second discussion. Councilperson Charland.
Yes, I would like to be added as a sponsor to the bill as amended.
So noted. Is there any further discussion on the motion to send to Planning Commission?
I just, I just want to thank you again for your leadership. I don't always agree with any of this stuff that's going on, but I do want to say you're one of the most, you're such a very caring councilperson. And I know you were doing this trying to think of the best possible solution in the end. And so for that, I want to thank you for.
Thank you.
I think if everybody just understood, all councilmembers are trying to do the best they can for the communities they serve and the people they serve. No one's trying to do anything with any nefarious, you know, feelings or decisions. We want to see everyone happy. In a perfect world, everyone would be happy with the same things we do. So, I just want you to know that people do hear you. And we try to come up with something that's pleasing and compromising for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick.
Just, very quickly, just because it's, is just so frustrating. Councilwoman Charland just said, what if we built a million units? Wouldn't that drop the rents? Sure. If we built a million units in Pittsburgh, the rents would plummet. But the market isn't going to build a million units because if the market built a million units, then their profits would drop. The market is going to build just enough units so that they can make the maximum profit, which is pretty much what we're doing now. Which is why we have buildings with vacancies, with one- and two-bedroom apartments for $2,500 to $3,000 a month. So, I just, this trickle-down notion is, it's fantasy. And anyway, I just, sorry, I just, I keep hearing it. It's like I need a bumper sticker. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilman Wilson. Sorry, it's been a long meeting.
It's okay. I'd like to add myself as a sponsor of the bill as well.
Thank you. Okay, so noted. And I will also, would also like to add my name as a sponsor of the bill as well. I, I'll just say, I think an argument could be made either way. We did, I did get to see an opinion by our law department as to whether this does need to go, like, this creates a substantive, a substantial enough change to the original intent of what is a very, very big bill that is more than IZ. But, that there were, there were arguments to be made either way, but that it does create a substantial enough change to need to go back to the Planning Commission. I'm not above the law. No one's above the law. I'm not going to fight that. I think, you know, there's a, I've heard today that there's a desire to want to be very transparent about, about what's in this amendment. And I'm certainly always in favor of that. Sort of hope that, I think a lot of us had hoped that we would be towards the end of this very long conversation and process. But, of course, if it needs to go back to Planning Commission, it needs to go back to Planning Commission. So of course, I'm not going to fight that. So, we can certainly take a vote on the motion and second, unless there's anything else to say about this motion.
No, just call a question. Come on.
Okay. So, all those in favor of sending bill 1545 to Planning Commission for report and recommendation, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Bill will be sent. Thank you very much. That moves us on to bill 2152. Bill 2152, resolution providing for the designation as an historic structures under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Ross and Aspenwall Pumping Stations located at 900 Freeport Road in the Lincoln-Lumington-Bellmore neighborhood in the 12th Ward in the city of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination and there is no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 2152, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2153. Bill 2153, resolution providing-
Bill 2153, resolution providing for the designation as an historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances, that certain structure known as the Rachel Carson Bridge, also known as the Ninth Street Bridge, spanning the Allegheny River in the North Shore and Central Business District Neighborhoods in the City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination, and there is no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2153, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Madam Chair, if you will, can we read the remaining bills together? These were all part of one big public hearing.
Before new papers, correct?
Except for, so, Bill 2154, 2155, 2156, were all part of one public hearing.
Thank you, yes, Madam Chair.
Bill 2154, resolution providing for the designation as an historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances, that certain structure known as the Roberto Clemente Bridge, also known as the Sixth Street Bridge, spanning the Allegheny River in the North Shore and Central Business District Neighborhoods in the City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination, and there is no cost to the city. Bill 2155, resolution providing for the designation as an historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances, that certain structure known as the Andy Warhol Bridge, also known as the Seventh Street Bridge, spanning the Allegheny River in the North Shore and Central Business District Neighborhoods in the City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination, and there is no cost to the city. And Bill 2156, resolution providing for the designation as an historic site under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances, that certain site known as Shenley Park, located in the Squirrel Hill North and Squirrel Hill South Neighborhoods in the 14th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The included parts, there are several included parcels, and the owner of the property supports the nomination, and there is no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bills 2154, 2155, and 2156, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. New papers, Bill 2333.
Bill 2333, resolution providing for the designation as an historic site under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances, that certain structure known as Police Station Number Three, also known as the Office of Municipal Investigations Building at 2603 Penn Avenue, located in the Strip District Neighborhood in the Second Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination, and there is no cost to the city.
Motion for cablecast public hearing, and I do have a comment.
With discussion?
Council President?
Sure.
Sorry.
Or I can, yeah.
Okay.
So, I just, trying to understand. So, we're the owner of the property, and it says in the last line, the owner of the property supports the nomination. And, I'm not aware of how that could be the case yet, so. If we could research that a little bit, thanks. For the clerk, thanks.
We'll answer by next week.
Well, yeah, I mean, who, who on behalf of the city said we support this? I guess is the question, given that we're the owner.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Isn't this true for all the bridges as well?
We don't own the bridges.
I'm Katie Reed, I'm a principal planner with the Department of City Planning. This nomination was submitted by Preservation Pittsburgh, and the way that nomination for a local landmarking works is that the owner is informed, and if there's no protest, then that's agreed to be agreement. So, notification was sent to the city. That's as far as it goes as part of the nomination process.
Who received that information?
I mean, the Real Estate Department, hopefully. The address that it goes to is just a city, a broad city address. That's the way the process works, so, yeah, that's the information I have.
Maybe we have to figure out a better process in the future.
We have Councilwoman Gross, Councilwoman Warwick.
Thank you, I didn't catch your name.
Katie Reed.
Okay, thank you. So, the previous bill that we just approved, that already had its public hearing, is 2156. And it says, the historic site is known as Shenley Park. So, it's the exact same situation. And we didn't object to that, and we were like, okay, it's city property. The city is nominating its own property, and it got a positive recommendation, and then we were just like, we just all voted to approve it. So, I'm just assuming that it's the exact same thing for the very next bill, which is 2333. Do you know?
There are a lot of, I mean, there are a lot of landmarked buildings that are city-owned. And so, I mean, I can't speak to why this would be any different, but the notification goes to the city, and if there's not objection, which there wasn't for Shenley Park, or all those various landmarks. Yeah, that's what I have.
I think the 2152 as well, the pump stations.
The pump stations are, yes, are owned by the city.
Also owned by the city, we approved that one. That one got its public hearing, and it was all supported, and council just voted to approve it. So, it looks, it looks to me to be the same, the same situation. So, that's all I had to offer, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick followed by Council President.
Yeah, thanks, so, I mean, just, just... Well, a couple of things, so, the Shenley Park one. You know, it was the Preservation Pittsburgh, right, Matt Falcone? Like, that was the Shenley, right, like, that was brought to us, and I was supportive. So, there was like an external group, his Squirrel, Historical Society.
Yeah, that's how nomination for a landmarking works, is that...
Right.
It's brought, it goes before the Historic Review Commission, goes before Planning Commission, gets recommendations.
Who did that for, I mean, again, just to clarify.
Matthew Falcone from Preservation Pittsburgh.
Oh, also for OMI, oh, got it, got it, okay. I mean, just for, because we talked about, I just want to sort of remind everyone about the conversation we had earlier about the OMI building. Again, that we were going to sell, or maybe give it to the URA to sell for us. I, I think we spoke about this, kind of like, I felt like this was a building in a very valuable piece, in a very valuable neighborhood, and I just kind of wondered what we might be able to, you know, get for the building, rather than just kind of handing it off and having the URA sell it, and, you know. At any rate, that was kind of the discussion prior. And I think I may have voted against selling it, or handing it over to the URA with the idea that if it is worthwhile, because it seemed to be in fairly good shape. I don't know, there was some debate about the roof. But it seemed like it was a building that could be sold for quite a bit of money, given the location. That aside, what does this do to that?
So, that process, I mean, the disposition to the URA would still be happening, as far as I know, you need to check, I mean, I suppose with the URA to make sure, but my understanding is that that is what's happening, and then the URA would put out an RFP for the property. And the URA, I believe, has their own set of requirements surrounding existing buildings, and whether they're rehabilitated or not. So, this, this would make it a local landmark, which means that it would be reviewed by the Historic Review Commission, and would be, you know, subject to the Secretary of the Interior standards for historic preservation. But that doesn't, that doesn't hold any restriction on demolition or significant change. It's just, that has to come before the commission, it has to be reviewed.
Oh, I see, because I was definitely curious. I mean, I remember at the time, the Councilman Wilson said that they were people who were interested in the building, and I was curious about who, and what, you know, what the interest... I don't know, just given that, that particular hot market that we've just been talking about, right? Like, what was, what was the interest, you know? What could the city have made on that building? What are we, at any rate, that... So, this wouldn't have any impact. So, if someone bought this building and decided to tear it down, it would just...
It would have to be approved by the Historic Review Commission if the building is locally landmarked.
Okay, and was the, I mean, I'm just trying, and I'm sort of ambivalent, or, I mean, this is not... But was the, was this brought forward because there was concern that the city was going to build? It is a pretty building, I will say that. Was there concern?
I don't know the impetus behind it being nominated by Preservation Pittsburgh.
Okay, all right, that's all, I was just curious about how it came to pass, so. Yeah, thanks, I guess I don't know how I'm going to vote, but, anyway, thank you.
Second round, Council President Lavell.
Thank you, very briefly. I don't, I don't believe the URA was notified of this. I do know the transaction, it has not been transacted to the URA as of yet. And I don't believe they would be in receipt of it until the end user had been identified. But I can also, with some level of certainty, probably say if the URA was aware of this, then they probably wouldn't have agreed to engage in the transaction, but...
They are aware of the nomination.
They are, they are now, but on the front end, they weren't made aware. The city was made aware, none of council was made aware, so. That's all.
Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, I just want to state for the record, because, I don't know, it keeps on coming up about who expressed interest on this property. There were two people, and I want to state for the record that one, one individual came forward and was interested in putting a park here, since there isn't really a great park in the Strip. And then the second person was looking to run an after-school program there, so. You know, just wanted to state that for the record, thanks. Since it keeps coming up, and I said that people approached me, so I just want to be transparent on that, about that. And that's why I wanted to get that over to the URA, so they can do their RFP process.
Thank you. So, the motion is, any further discussion? The motion is to hold for a public hearing, which has not been held yet, and I think it's probably incumbent upon us to talk amongst ourselves and with our planners about potentially a different notification process for city-owned properties and city-owned buildings, so that so that all bases are covered, and the city is very clearly defined. I'll just say that. All right, all those in favor of holding Bill 2333 for cablecast public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held, thank you. Final committee of the day, Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Mosley.
New papers, Bill 2325, ordinance authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Borough of Ingram with regard to the city providing fire protection services to the Borough pursuant to the General Local Government Code.
Motion to approve.
Second, with discussion?
With discussion?
Just briefly, I just want to say, you know, our district borders the most boroughs. We have a ton of boroughs around. And I think this is a good example of how we can do some collaboration and some work with other boroughs. But I actually still, again, think we need to have a deeper conversation, and I just want to make sure I say that. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of Bill 2325, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our standing committee's agenda. We do have some brief announcements this afternoon. Was it 2:00 PM? We will take a little recess and maybe reschedule or reconvene, I don't know what the plan is. Our cablecast post-agenda discussion on the municipal fleet and fleet efficiency report. It's Councilman Wilson. Councilman, do you have a...
Yeah, I'd like to take a recess and then continue on.
Continue.
Yeah.
Thirty-minute recess? Thirty, no, sorry, thirty-minute, thirty-minute...
Break.
Yeah, break, before we convene.
We need a motion to adjourn.
Well, yeah, we're getting to that.
Sure, 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 so, okay, so that, so we will continue on with the cablecast post-agenda today. On Thursday, October...
Twenty minutes, twenty-five, twenty minutes? Twenty-five.
Three o'clock? Okay. On Thursday, October 16th, at 11:00 AM, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 1417 relative to zoning changes on Shadlin Avenue. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 AM the day of the hearing. Next week, council will hold their regular meeting on Tuesday, October 21st, and standing committee's meeting on Wednesday, October 22nd, both at 10:00 AM. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Anything for members?
I just want to first wish our council president, Bruce Kraus, a speedy recovery. He, everyone knows he's had a mild heart attack this past week, or yesterday, correct, Bobby?
Monday.
Monday. And so, I just want to wish him well, and from all of council. And I also want to congratulate Councilman Coghill for becoming a Pappy, and I couldn't wait to say that, so live on TV, to call him a Pappy. So happy, so congratulations, congratulations, Pappy.
Anything else for members? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All in favor? Meeting's adjourned.